Two, one. Welcome to the May 19th City Council meeting. I am Jim Nash. I am the City Council President, and I will be presiding this evening. I would like to open by first making everyone aware that this meeting and all participating on Zoom will be audio and video recorded. I now call the City Council to order. Laura, can you please call the roll?
Or Counselor Elkins.
Here.
Counselor Foster.
Here.
Counselor Gore.
Yeah.
Counselor Jarrett.
Here.
Counselor Labarge.
Here.
Counselor Maori.
Here.
Counselor Moulton.
Here.
Counselor Nash.
Here.
And Counselor Perry.
I'm here.
Counsel President, you have a quorum.
Excellent. Okay, we are now convened. Tonight, tonight residents will have a number of opportunities to share their thoughts on matters before City Council. I want to make sure everyone is aware of how we will proceed under these somewhat unusual circumstances. We will begin with two public hearings, one on a poll petition, and another on an administrative order regarding the Health Department and the Department of Community Care. Due to the length of our agenda, I am, I am going to ask that speakers for the hearings on these matters keep their comments to under three minutes. After the public hearings, we will open public comment where speakers can speak to any topic for up to two minutes. We will then proceed to our announcements from counselors and from the mayor, and the mayor will give her budget message. We will then recess for City Services to consider the appointment of Patrick McCarthy as the Central Services Director. People interested in this appointment can speak at that time. It will be up to the Chair of City Services to set a time limit on this comment. Once City Services adjourns, we are back, and we are back in the full City Council. We will consider an order to opt out of mosquito spraying, where once again, public input will be part of our process. I will be limiting this comment to three minutes. There you have it. Two hearings, public comment, a committee meeting, and a public input on mosquito spraying. I'm going to now read my preamble for public comment, or much of what I read for public comment, as it will guide us throughout all of these procedures. If you wish to make a comment, please use the raise hand feature. The raise hand feature is on the bottom menu bar under reactions. If you are calling by phone, you can raise your hand by hitting star nine. If you are having trouble raising your hand, you may use the chat feature to send a message to Counselor Foster, and we will work to make sure you have a chance to speak. A note on chat. To ensure quality access and because of the open meeting law, technical problems such as not being able to raise your hand are the only thing that the chat function will be used for, and the chat function will only be available during, during times where we're taking public comment. We cannot accept comment over chat, private chat, and/or chat only visible on Zoom during a public meeting is antithetical to an open public process in violation of the council rules for public participation and violates the spirit and potentially the law of open meeting law. If you want to submit a written public comment, please email it to citycouncil@northhamptonma.gov, and it will be sent to all counselors and will be part of the public record. Our rules also state that counselors and members of the public shall conduct themselves with civility and respect at all times. Your protected speech is a constitutional right and one that we ask you to wield with consideration and respect for all, and with recognition that the public space that grants you that freedom is shared equally by everyone. Also, according to open meeting law, if someone is disrupting a meeting, they may be removed. One last note, this meeting can also be watched on Channel 15 or by streaming on North Hampton Open Media's YouTube and other platforms. Okay, where's my Zoom button here? All right. To the agenda. All right, we did that. Public hearings. Okay, first item, a public hearing on item 22.081 National Grid Poll Petition for one JO Poll on Clark Street. Per Mass Gunilla Chapter 166, Section 22, the North Hampton City Council is holding a public hearing on National Grid's petition to install one JO Poll on Clark Street. The City Council will hear all persons who wish to be heard thereon. Could I get a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so motion was made by Counselor Jarrett, and I believe seconded by Counselor Perry. Any discussion on opening the public hearing? Hearing none. Laura, could I get a roll call?
Sure. Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
And Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing on this poll petition is now open. Do we have somebody from either National Grid or from the city here to speak to this, this item? Maybe we need to find them here.
No, Lisa Jocinski usually is here.
Hmm. Maybe she expected to be rather late.
Oh.
Hmm. Oh. Is, uh...
I sent her and Lisa. Huh.
Well.
She was right on time.
Yeah.
Well, she might have thought we were going to be hearing a lot of comment on other things first.
Lisa Ayers from National Grid did acknowledge receipt of the agenda and Zoom link, so her colleague, I sent it to both of them, but it was acknowledged.
We want to reverse the order of the public hearings?
Well, um, yeah, we probably want to do that. So we're going to want to close this hearing, correct? Or do we, oh, Laura, do we keep it open?
Looks like the mayor has something to say.
Sorry. So just a point of order. So the, the next one isn't posted till 7:15, so you have to wait till 7:15 to begin it, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Can you sing some tunes for us, President?
I'm sorry, what?
Could you sing some tunes for us?
Well, you know what, um, while we're waiting, we could do some announcements, I suppose. Laura, is it okay to do announcements while we're in a public?
I guess you could close it and reopen it.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing, so we could do some announcements.
I second that.
Move, move to close the public hearing.
Okay, so Counselor Maori has made a motion to close the public hearing. I think Counselor Labarge seconded it. Any discussion? Hearing none. Laura, roll call, please.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Gore. Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
And Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Okay. Let's head on down to announcements. Do counselors in the, have any announcements? Counselor Maori.
Yeah, I have a announcement from the Finance Committee, which is for the public hearings, which are May 31st and June 1st, Tuesday and Wednesday at 6:00 PM. I wanted to let the public know that it will be on Tuesday, we will be hearing from the department heads and discussing the budgets of Central Services, Fire and Rescue, BPW, Department of Public Works, Health and Human Services, and the Department of Community Care. All those are on Tuesday. That's starting at 6:00. And then on Wednesday, we will, we will be discussing and hearing from the department heads of the North Hampton Public Schools and the North Hampton Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Maori. Any other announcements? Okay, well, I have one. I would like to announce my appointments to the Select Committee to study barriers to participating in city committees and commissions. And I, I am appointing Susan McDonald Bolanos, Cynthia Suopis, Chana White, Javier Luengo Garrido, Gwen Nabod, Garrick Perry, and Jamila Gore. I'm, you know, Counselor Foster and I worked pretty diligently on this, and we are super happy with this group of people. They, they represent, we, the Health Department, the Planning Board, here, where's my list so I can, the, the Human Rights Commission, we, we have the ACLU represented, we have somebody who lives in public housing, we have two of our fine counselors also joining this group, and I'm very excited about the, the prospects of, of the recommendations that they're going to come up with. And I'd like to thank both Counselor Perry and Counselor Gore for stepping forward here. I really appreciate your leadership. And yeah, this is, this is really cool. So, thank you. All right. Any other announcements? All right, are we at 7:50? You know? Yes, Counselor Perry.
Since we have time, we're biding for our time. I would like to just note that Summer on Strong event has officially begun, right in our downtown. It was an amazing addition to our city last year. In fact, it, you know, gained a lot of regional attention, and I'm excited that our city government has also decided to chip in and expand not only the musical calendar, but also some of the accoutrement around the area, and it looks beautiful. So if you guys in the community have a chance, please go and enjoy some local food and some good times and great music.
Excellent announcement. Okay, it is now 7:15, and let's try opening this other public hearing. We know the mayor's here, so.
All right, I moved open the public hearing on administrative order.
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion was made by Counselor Moulton and seconded by Counselor Perry. Here, let me just read it real quick, what we're opening here. Public hearing on administrative order. The City Council will consider proposed amendments to the City of North Hampton Administrative Code, Part 1 Administrative Organization, Section 3.0 Health and Human Services Division, and Part 2 Multi-Member Appointed Organization, Section 12.0 Health Board of. So, that's, that's the, the hearing we're opening. Any discussion on opening the public hearing? Hearing none. Laura, roll call, please.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori. Okay, I don't see her momentarily. Skip over Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
And Counselor Foster.
Yes.
One more try for Counselor Maori, but I don't see her. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I see her there. Okay. Okay, the public hearing is now open, and Mayor, do you want to open this by, how do you want to proceed here?
Gladly. Good evening, councilors. So this is the administrative order that we introduced at the last meeting and had pretty extensive conversation and, and presentation on. So this is restructuring the Health Department as the Department of Health and Human Services, and creating the Department of Community Care within DHHS. So I am here tonight for this hearing with the Department of Community Care Implementation Director, Sean Donovan, and Michelle Ferry is also here. She was here last time as well. She is the Health Department Assistant Deputy Director, and she's been working very, very closely with Director O'Leary, who couldn't be with us this evening, and with Sean on moving this forward. So we are, if I don't, if the council wants, I could read the, the letter that I read last time again, but since we had such a, oh, I see, I see a shaking of the head. Since we had such an extensive presentation last time, you know, we're, we're happy to just be available for any questions or any discussion you want to have with us.
Okay. Well, with that, I, I think it would be, well, counselors, do you have any questions about the proposal since we last met? Okay, seeing none. I will now entertain residents who'd like to speak to this. So if you're interested, if you could use your raised hand feature, and we will recognize you, and, and you'll have three minutes to speak to, to this matter. All right. All right, I don't see anybody raising their hands. We'll give it another minute. Okay. Well, seeing that nobody from the public wishes to speak to this administrative order, I will consider a motion to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Labarge and seconded by, I think, hold on.
Counselor Moulton.
By Counselor Moulton. I thought I quickly saw somebody raise their hand. I think it was Spencer.
I don't know.
All right, I'm not seeing that hand. Okay, so we, we have a motion on the floor to close the public hearing. Any, so, any discussion on closing the hearing? Hearing none. Laura, roll call, please.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
And Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Okay, Mayor.
I just, I just want to give a quick thank you and shout out to Michelle and Sean for being available to be here tonight and ready to discuss this. Thank you so much for making the time to be here. And don't worry, we'll be doing lots of talking from here on out, but thank you. Thank you for being here.
Yes, I also want to thank you, you know, for, on the council's behalf, for being here. And I think that the, the lack of, of public input here also reflects the degree of support for this measure. And we will be taking this, this item up later on tonight. So anyway, so thank you for being here. All right, um, do we have National, is Lisa here yet?
Still don't see her.
Okay, so not only is it long, this agenda, we need to be flexible. So why don't we now head on to public comment? The rules are much the same as I've read before. Let me, where are my rules here? To ensure everyone has equal opportunity to speak, the council limits comments to two minutes. You are in no way obligated to use the full two minutes, but if you do, after two minutes, I will ask you to please finish your sentence. A two-minute timer will appear in the Zoom gallery display to help speakers track their time. According to council rules, we do not respond during public comment as it is your time to speak. So while your comment should be directed to us, you will understand when we don't respond. You may speak to on any topic. It doesn't need to be an item on the agenda. I ask that all but the council turn off your video until called upon. Only the person recognized has the floor, and all comments are to be directed to the council. So, and, and all of those other rules I read before are also applied here. So, public comment, I see one hand raised. John Paradis, I see another. Okay, good. People are queuing up. John, are you able to unmute?
Think so.
Okay, welcome, John. You have the floor.
Very good. Hello, greetings. Thank you, Council President Nash. My name is John Paradis. I live in Ward 4. I'm speaking today in support of Resolution 22103. That is before you this evening for a second reading, and which calls on the federal government to keep the VA Medical Center in Leeds open, and to fight any move to further privatize veteran health care. As a veteran with service-connected disabilities, I rely on the VA Medical Center here for my primary care and to coordinate all my specialty care needs, which are extensive. The recommendations to close the North Hampton VA Medical Center would be devastating to me and my family. As it is now, there are specialists who are not available in Leeds, so I already must travel to West Haven, Connecticut to meet with VA specialists. I have a vehicle, and I have the means to get to and from appointments, but I know from working with many veterans over the years, how much of a hardship it is for veterans to travel long distances for care. It's quite a concern for me that there have been so many of us in the veteran community, most principally Stephen Connor, who have worked so hard over the years to ensure veterans suffering from homelessness and veterans needing inpatient behavioral health care, make sure that they get good care at Leeds, and what would this mean should, should Leeds close? Veterans would be expected to get their care at other locations, and to us, that's unacceptable. I particularly worry about the veterans who reside at Soldier On, and what happens to their access to health care should the VA Medical Center close. I greatly worry about all the combat veterans over the years who have seen, who have seen the great transformation up in Leeds with the PTS Ward and all the other service-connected mental health. And I'm greatly concerned about all the veterans who have told me over the years that the VA saved their lives. You know, what happens to them? What happens to all the veterans that will need care in the future? So with that, I just want to say thank you to the mayor, Stephen Connor, all the city council members who joined Representative McGovern in the listening session at the VFW in Florence last month. And this resolution is much needed. It covers everything that was said that night, and I thank all of you for your support for veterans in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next up is Ace Taylor. Welcome, Ace.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Ace Taylor, Ward 3. I'm a member of the North Hampton Housing Partnership, as well as a homeowner and landlord in North Hampton. I am here speaking in support of the bill to ban broker's fees from tenants. I'm certain other people will speak to this matter tonight, so I'll keep my comments to things that may be unique. Landlords are the ones that are equipped to bear the burden of broker's fees. In most parts of the country, it is landlords who pay for this service. It's so much a standard that it's in our tax code. Landlords can write off these expenses as part of their taxes. The reason why it's like this in this area, I can't say for certain, but it places a very unfair burden on tenants. The right and just thing to do is to pass this order to relieve tenants of this fee. Secondly, I would like to speak in support of the ranked choice voting measure, as I think that's something that's going to aid in civic engagement and make it easier and more friendly in order to vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ace. Next up is Hannah Schaefer.
Hi there. My name is Hannah Schaefer. I am a renter in Ward 5, and also a member of the North Hampton Housing Partnership. And I'm speaking tonight in favor of the Home Rule petition to prohibit landlords and brokers from requiring broker's commissions to be paid by a tenant or prospective tenant. When the Unlocking Opportunities Study that looked at barriers to housing in North Hampton was conducted in 2019, it identified that at least two-thirds of North Hampton rentals were owned by rental agencies locally. Most of these properties require first-last security and a broker's fee of 60% of one month's rent for move-in. Rentnoho currently provides, I think, a wonderful service to landlords, but elsewhere in the country, it's not considered normal for this fee that they charge to be shouldered entirely by tenants. Generally, this fee is paid by landlords elsewhere in the country. So I just want to speak in support of the Home Rule petition. I think that Rentnoho provides a valuable service. I think it's great that they photograph the properties, that they list the properties, that they help landlords understand the law, and I just don't think that tenants should be paying for that service. So, thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. Next up is Spencer Fox Peterson. Welcome, Spencer.
Good evening. Thanks, thank you for having me. I'm just calling, calling in to voice support of banning broker fees for renting. It's already hard enough for people to achieve the American dream in the United States as the current housing crisis. So at the very least, we should make it easier for people just to have their heads. This would be an excellent step in ways to show that even if you don't own property, that the government sees these people. I own my own home. I live in Holyoke, and I work out of North Hampton. I'm lucky to have owned my own home, so, but I have been a renter, and very often in our communities, renters are disregarded, whether politically or resources. So please, families, as everybody else has listed great reasons. I would also like to add, not related to the broker fees, I would like the council to address the accusations levied against Officer Barowski of North Hampton PD. He has a laundry list of issues, and has cost the city a lot of money in liability and lawsuits and all sorts of stuff. This is all public knowledge. I encourage anybody listening to me to Google Officer Barowski. I believe the Shoestring wrote an article recently about him, but has also detailed his past issues. This is a waste of money. So please look into what happened to complete spelled Officer Barowski while arresting somebody. Regardless, I know the DA said they're not going to investigate it, but that doesn't mean anything. The DA never goes after cops. So that's where I'm coming from on that. So please, please take this seriously. You have officers that are costing you guys money. And I drive through the city. I'm governed by your government, and I would really appreciate it. Thank you. Take care.
Thank you, Spencer. Thank you, Spencer. Next up is Shelby.
Hi, I'm Shelby Lee and I'm speaking in favor of efforts from Northampton government to keep the VA open. My spouse receives a majority of his medical care through the VA. I also have disabilities and he is my primary caregiver. So if he had to go to Boston or Springfield, which would be the closest locations for care and a majority of the specialists would be Boston and primary care would be Boston. It would impact both of our abilities to receive our current health services. And it would add a significant financial burden to us because of the gas prices currently. I also want to speak in favor of banning the broker's fees in Northampton. I am a renter. I have rented through Rent NoHo since 2017. Anytime I've had to work with them, they knew nothing about the properties I was visiting. They couldn't answer basic questions like who the internet provider to the property was. One time I showed up to view a listing of theirs and had to walk up a snowy unplowed driveway with a five-year-old child to look at an apartment that was supposed to be a two-bedroom and what they were calling a two-bedroom apartment. One of the bedrooms was actually a closet. It had no outlets. It was, that's not an exaggeration. It was a closet. They, they really don't provide any service to the tenant, so it doesn't make sense. You know, I'm sure they do do a lot of work for the landlord, but it just doesn't make sense for the tenants to pay them for, you know, no services that they provide for the tenant. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelby. Next up is Lauren Rollins.
Hello.
Welcome, Lauren.
Thank you. I'm Lauren Rollins. I'm a resident of Ward Two. I'm a three-time renter in Northampton and I'm the founding president of the Western Massachusetts Policy Center, which is a nonprofit public policy training and research organization that's rooted not in political ideology, but pragmatic solutions to persistent local and regional policy problems. We essentially seek to do the greatest good for the greatest number of people with the fewest unintended consequences. And this is why the broker fee issue is of special interest to us. Last month's public hearing demonstrated that the current system benefits only a very small group of people, namely either the owners of the rental brokers themselves or the owners and brokers of the area's largest real estate firms, individuals who've diversified their personal investment portfolios by becoming private landlords at a fairly large scale. This allows these individuals to double dip. And by that, I mean if you're both a landlord who passes the broker fees on to your renters and you're also the owner of the company that collects that very fee, the current structure is a profitable racket, but it is a racket. This is why even a quick search of Rent NoHo's reviews going back for years reveals a pattern of egregious complaints from the tenant customers they claim to serve. And if we imagine any other business in town, a restaurant, for example, where almost all of its customers feel that they're paying exorbitant rates for bad service and bad food, that business would be out of business in very short order. The fact that Rent NoHo isn't is an Econ 101 sign that anti-competitive behavior is occurring. Consider the often repeated talking point that repositioning fees onto landlords will put brokers out of business. But why? Why should it matter who's paying the money as long as it's being paid? Here's why. Because currently renters are a captive market. They're forced to pay for a service that someone else has chosen and contracted. They can't shop around without foregoing a particular unit in a market with severely limited inventory. This effectively functions as a monopoly. But landlords aren't captive. When they pay the fees, they'll demand lower fees, better contract terms, responsive customer service. And brokers that fail to provide that may go out of business, but those who innovate and adapt will succeed. Rent NoHo and other brokers should therefore take this as a challenge and rise to the occasion. The current system is shielding a bad business model from failure and it's stifling diversity, accessibility, and affordability in Northampton's housing market. And for all these reasons, we urge you to approve the amendments and vote in favor of the home rule petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. You almost got it in under two minutes. I know she worked on that. Joshua.
Hey, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, Joshua, welcome.
Thanks so much. Josh Feldman, I live in Ward Three. I'm a school council member at Bridge Street and Bridge Street Elementary, where I have two kids currently and a third coming into kindergarten. Looking forward to the budget conversation this evening and I would just love to raise up education as a top priority for the city. I think all votes will rise if we continue to support our great schools. And in the coming year and years, we have a budget challenge ahead of us with state funding not necessarily covering what we, what we're going to need for the schools. And this year, there's already been cuts to positions with a large potential budget cliff for next year. So I'd just like to encourage all to, to support our great schools and our great principals who are doing incredible things with limited resources. And imagine what Northampton could be like as a magnet for business and community if we were in one of the top 10 school districts in the state, which I believe we have the talent to do, but need more resources to do. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Joshua. Okay. Last call for public comment. Oh, we have Hannah. Hannah Fleishman. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Hannah. Just a quick comment in support of banning broker's fees. I wasn't at the first hearing, but just one other argument that I know the landlords are making is that it would just cause rents to go up. But just to note that that would actually be less harmful than charging the broker fee. Anyone living paycheck to paycheck knows that, you know, it's easier to spread out a cost over time than to pay at once. That's all. Thank you for considering.
Thank you, Hannah. Right, this is my second last call. Okay. Well, let's see if somebody raises their hand while I look at the agenda here to see what we're doing next. No more hands raised. Okay, so we are going to move on from public comment. We've already done our announcements. Maybe the mayor would like to do her budget presentation. You're ready? We could throw in a public hearing again.
I'm ready. I'm ready. Um, thank you, councilors. I was very pleased to submit the budget for FY23 to the council on Monday. And tonight, I am happy to share with you the budget message. The budget message is an important part of the budget process and is actually stipulated in the charter that there be a budget message. So I am happy to read that to you this evening to the honorable members of the city council. I submit for your consideration and approval my proposed $126,26,677 FY2023 budget for the City of Northampton in accordance with Article 7, Section 7-3 of our charter. This budget is comprised of $110,228,601 general fund combined with four enterprise fund budgets for water, $6,945,000 sewer, $6,177,500 solid waste, $679,090 in stormwater and flood control at $1,996,486. This budget proposal represents a 4.07 increase from the current FY22 city Northampton budget that ends with the fiscal year on June 30th, 2022. As I sat down to write my first budget messages, Mayor of Northampton for FY23, I read and reflected on past budget message introductions by my predecessors. I found that our recent past helps give context to our present and can inform our decisions that are on the horizon. This budget represents historic advances for Northampton while also reflecting some of the hard challenges of our time. I want to acknowledge that this year's budget is being created amidst national economic uncertainty and rising inflation, the prospect of rollbacks of fundamental rights by the Supreme Court. And abroad, there are continued atrocities by Russia against Ukraine and global unrest as the climate crisis rages on. Our current FY22 operating budget was described in its message by former Mayor Narcoitz as one of, quote, cautious optimism and active recovery. As this message goes to print, 67% of Northampton residents have had at least one dose of the vaccine and 49% are now fully vaccinated, end quote. A year later, I am happy to update these statistics and report that 93% of Northampton residents have had at least one dose of the COVID-19 vaccine. 80% have had the primary series and are considered fully vaccinated and 55% now have had one or more boosters. The Northampton Health Department's vaccine clinics have administered over 60,000 vaccinations to date. While there have been great strides in vaccination rates, thanks to the remarkable efforts of the Northampton Health Department, the COVID-19 pandemic has continued to have a destabilizing effect on the broader economy, supply chains, and labor market. While I've seen some recovery in areas of local revenue, others have remained at well below pre-pandemic levels. In truth, the collection rates of some revenue streams may never be the same. Parking fund revenues for FY23 are projected at a conservative $1.2 million, which represents a 40% reduction of the revenues annually generated by parking fees pre-COVID. And it has been slower to rebound than hotel motel and meals taxes. This revenue fund bears watching as the economic recovery of the downtown area continues. For FY23, the city projects marijuana revenue of approximately $975,000, which is less than the prior fiscal years, primarily due to continuing loss in market share to the other communities throughout the region. It remains to be seen what will be a sustainable market share for Northampton as more locations continue to open across the state. On the expenditure side, fixed costs continue to increase at levels far exceeding the maximum 2.5% over which municipalities and the Commonwealth are forbidden to raise local revenue levels without an override. Health insurance at $12.5 million in FY23 is the largest fixed cost line item in the operational budget. While the most subscribed non-Medicare Health Plan, Health New England, increased by 6.5%, Medicare plans only increased an average of 1.8%. In addition, there was a significant shift among subscribers from family to individual plans. Both of these factors contributed to keeping the total increase down lower than projections, though the city is experiencing increases of 7.5% to 20% in insurance costs for workers' compensation, property, auto, and liability, all of which put pressure on the budget. Due to fiscal uncertainty, department heads were asked to submit level service budgets and in some cases were asked to revise their initial budgets and make cuts. The notable exceptions are in education and the newly restructured Department of Health and Human Services, which will include the Department of Community Care. As we look across the general fund departmental categories, most personnel services, PS, changes are for salary steps. Though some departments saw an overall decrease in PS due to senior staff leaving. One area where we have incorporated operations and maintenance, OM, increases to better realistically budget for the coming year is to account for the precipitous rise in energy costs in the last few months. This is seen most notably in the Department of Public Works, Highway Division, Forest, Parks, and Cemetery Division, and in Central Services. In general government, we have continued to centralize technology services, software licenses, and purchasing in the Information and Technology Services, ITS, department by moving departmental technology lines and expenses to ITS. Parking enforcement's PS was reduced due to significant turnover of senior staff and due to the moving of a half-time shared parking maintenance position to a full-time in parking maintenance, which increased that PS. On August 13th, 21, Governor Charlie Baker signed the amendment to the city charter, which included a provision to change the status of the city clerk position from elected to appointed. This change required that a job description be created and evaluated by human services, human resources, and that the position be placed on the wage and salary scale. This change, along with an increase in OM expenses to purchase election equipment to support ranked choice voting and regular PS step increases resulted in a 6.77% increase in the city clerk budget. The Office of Planning and Sustainability's increase in PS of 4.23% reflects a restructuring in the first half of FY22 due to a change in staffing. The principal clerk position was eliminated and a sustainability project manager position was created, increasing the PS line. The slight increase in OM is to address the need for groundskeeping supplies and printing costs. In public safety, two departments have seen overall decreases in their budgets. The Police Department's budget was reduced as more information technology costs were shifted to the ITS department. And the Public Safety Communications Center received two grants, one of which covered the funding of two dispatchers, effectively reducing its PS, while the other reduced the OM budget. Fire rescues increase is mainly a reflection of step increases, training costs, and steep rises in expenses for EMS supplies due to supply chain issues. The Building Department only saw contractual step increases. Under Culture and Recreational Services, we continue our deep commitment to the public library system by increasing the budgets of Forbes and Lilly libraries by 3.12% and 3% respectively. Parks and Recreation saw a small decrease overall due to the transition of Information Technology Services to the ITS department. Finally, Arts and Culture maintains stable funding, adding only contractual step increases in PS. The Department of Public Works, DPW, increases, as noted above, are mostly a reflection of the rising cost of supplies and energy. The FY23 budget will provide important funding for planned improvements to city infrastructure and projects directed to maintain our roads, cemeteries, and parks. The four enterprise funds, water, sewer, solid waste, and stormwater and flood control are mostly level-funded and self-sustaining. The reserves in the funds will be used to support the operational and capital project budgets for each utility. Therefore, I have recommended no rate increases for FY23. However, the impending departure of Coca-Cola from Northampton will have a significant impact on the water and sewer revenues as the industry makes up one-third of the collections in both utilities. DPW Director Liscalia and I will be working with Coca-Cola officials and looking at all options available to mitigate the expected loss in revenue. This budget continues our strong investment and commitment to our public school districts. The city appropriation to Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School will increase by 4%. And the city appropriation to Northampton Public Schools, NPS, will increase by 5.07%. The increase for MPS represents the initial 4% increase anticipated as a part of the implementation of the Prop 2.5 General Operating Override and renewal of the Fiscal Stability Plan by the people of Northampton and an additional $109,000 allocated to NPS during the school budget process. After hearing from the community, school committee, teachers, and staff about concerns for next year, next school year, as we adapt to an endemic COVID-19 school environment, I cut $109,000 from the city budget to give an additional increase to MPS for a total increase of $1,447,000 or a 4.33% increase from FY22. This increase far exceeds the city's investment in any other department or service provided to the Northampton residents. Maintaining this level of commitment to education in Northampton was a high priority for my administration, even as it required tough choices elsewhere in the budget. At the Northampton School Committee budget vote on April 15th, 22, an additional $250,000 was passed by the committee with a 6-4 vote. While I was one of the four school committee members that didn't vote for this additional increase, I have included it in this FY23 budget. As I said at the April 15th meeting, I voted against the increase because the school committee stated that a recurring revenue source has not been identified to support the increase. Without that, it may result, sorry, without that, it will result in an annually compounding budget shortfall in the MPS budget. In FY23, the MPS budget relies on significant portion of reserved school of choice funds. The use of these funds is exceeding the school of choice revenue, drawing down the fund balance at a rate that will result in a significant budget gap next year. Additionally, one-time federal COVID-19 elementary and secondary school emergency relief, ESR, funds are being used to support and grow the FY23 MPS budget on some recurring and compounding expenses, not just one-time expenditures. Some of this growth is attributable to the hiring of 29 additional educational and health staff since the start of the pandemic. Based on the October 21 Department of Elementary and Secondary Education count used to calculate state aid, the student body has decreased by 80 students. The use of reserves greater than incoming revenue and one-time federal funds to such a degree will create a gap that will exceed the city's capacity to raise additional revenue to cover it. And I'm concerned about our ability to maintain our educational program and staffing at current levels in near future years. I appreciate the challenges of this time and the need the pandemic has created for significant additional support and the necessity to aid schools as we recover from the acute pandemic years and adjust to what the future holds for maintenance of an endemic situation. Therefore, I've incorporated the additional allocation into the budget for this year. I expect that my colleagues on the school committee and I will work to address these concerns and to transition MPS to a sustainable budget post-emergency relief in the upcoming years. At 5.07%, this is the second-largest percent increase to MPS in 15 years. The largest being 6.27% in FY2014, when additional $985,000 was added to the MPS budget after the June 13 override established the Fiscal Stability Plan and the Fiscal Stability Stabilization Fund was created. The 2013 General Operating Override corrected a projected $1.4 million budget gap between revenue between revenue and level services and staff for the FY twenty-fourteen budget, which would have resulted in deep cuts to the biggest department in the city, the North Hampton Public Schools. One of the reasons I ran for mayor of North Hampton is my appreciation for and commitment to the continuation of the Fiscal Stability Plan. This plan, which the people of North Hampton renewed in March twenty-twenty with another two point five million dollar general operating override, the use of which was delayed until FY twenty-two right now, and has been able, has been able to create job and service stability for the last nine years. Prior to its implementation in twenty-fourteen and due to the economic devastation of the Great Recession, the city's revenues, reserves were almost completely depleted. The Capital Stabilization Fund held less than five thousand dollars, and no capital investments on the city's infrastructure were done. Instead of working to balance the budget with level or enhanced services as we have in recent years, school and city budgets regularly needed to cut staff and services to achieve the required balanced budget. In those days, the city's budget was sometimes a painful seesaw between growth and cuts, and the schools and city departments suffered, especially from the loss of skilled employees who sought greater stability elsewhere. The Fiscal Stability Model was built to provide reasonable increases that are sustainable over a multi-year period, especially for MPS, which has had an average annual increase to its budget of three point seven six percent in that time. Unplanned increases and substantial use of one-time revenue to balance and grow the budget are not sustainable financial practices. It risks jeopardizing the plan and this period of budget, job, department, and service stability. The Fiscal Stability Plan has been updated, and the timeline and the amount needed for the next general operating override has been altered. In FY twenty-two, the Fiscal Stability Plan indicated that in FY twenty-three, the city would be able to put away about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in the Fiscal Stability Stabilization Fund and would be anticipating the need for an override in FY twenty-five to cover a two point two million dollar deficit in FY twenty-six. The plan's been updated with the FY twenty-three proposed budget and projected trends and assumptions that track with the previous year. However, we are now looking at a two point five million dollar deficit in FY twenty-six. This increase in the deficit is despite delaying the bonding and cutting back city departments' requests to be able to balance FY twenty-three budget. Preserving our reserves at appropriate levels, using them only for one-time expenses, and following the Fiscal Stability Budget Model helps maintain the stability of our bond rating, which isn't just an empty accolade. Its value is in the significant savings on our debt service, especially during volatile economic times. This March, after our bond rating was reaffirmed at the highest level, AAA-stable, I authorized the refinancing of our twenty-twelve bonds that will save the city four hundred and thirty-two thousand forty-eight dollars in interest over ten years, which allows us to put those funds towards other priorities in the general operating budget. This is just the most recent example of the massive benefit the city has experienced by earning the best interest rates on borrowings, which allows us to invest in and maintain our infrastructure and gives us flexibility to deliver on the city's needs. Our bond rating also reflects that the highest and best management practices are present in the city. This helps to draw investors, both commercial and residential, to the city, positively impacting our new growth. We've relied heavily on new growth for additional revenue to meet our budget needs. It took years for the city to attain the AAA bond rating, and a sustained drawdown of reserves will negatively impact it and our revenues for the general fund. The state funding projections built into the budget are always based on the governor's cherry sheet because the state budget process concludes after our budget must be passed. At the time of printing, the House and Senate Ways and Means budgets included a proposed increase in Chapter Seventy per student allocation that would increase our state aid by eighty thousand two hundred and eighty dollars for MPS and three thousand five hundred and seventy dollars for Smith Book and Agricultural High School. Additionally, there is a proposal in the House budget to fully fund the charter school reimbursement formula. While that would be appreciated, as the state rarely fulfills the obligation of its own formula, its formula only reimburses the sending district for the first three years out of the district and at significantly diminishing percentages. If the House proposal is approved, it would provide an additional twenty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars over the governor's proposed budget for a total reimbursement of five hundred and fifty-five thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars of the two million eight hundred and fifty-five thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars of charter school sending tuition that is projected to leave the district. Any school-related increases that ultimately get signed in with the final state budget will help the city fund the additional increase voted for by the school committee. There is great need for more state funding for public districts, public district schools, which is felt very deeply by North Hampton. North Hampton's Chapter Seventy state school aid has remained stagnant for over twenty years, though, of course, required net school spending, NSS, has increased steadily. The city's general fund makes up and far exceeds the difference in support of the North Hampton Public Schools, even with the limit on raising property tax revenue under Proposition Two and a Half. In FY twenty-two, the city's appropriation was ten point nine million dollars, or thirty-three point one percent over required net school spending, and is expected that the FY twenty-three appropriation will be at least twelve million dollars over net school spending. I look forward to working together with the City Council and School Committee to continue to fight for more equitable school funding from the state and to pass the Fair Share Amendment this November. It is hoped that a progressive change like this in the state tax structure will bring in a revenue stream to support the needs of district public education more equitably across the Commonwealth and ease the burden on most North Hampton taxpayers in the city budget. But it must pass, and then we must fight to ensure that it is implied, it is applied in a way that benefits all communities, including North Hampton. The second-largest increase in appropriation from the general fund at six hundred and sixty-six thousand nineteen dollars, and the largest in percent at a hundred and twelve percent, is for the proposed transition of the North Hampton Health Department to the Department of Health and Human Services, DHHS, under the leadership of Commissioner Meredith O'Leary and the creation of the Department of Community Care, DCC, within the structure of DHHS. As noted in my recent administrative order, the arrival in early twenty-twenty of the COVID- nineteen pandemic radically altered expectations for local public health responses across the country, and significantly so for the North Hampton Health Department, which had already established itself as a regional leader in creating sound health policy for Hampshire County. The COVID- nineteen pandemic has shown the world the critical importance of public health and underscored the need for transition already underway, that from an inspectional services department to a comprehensive public health and human services department, led by a commissioner of health and human services to better reflect a comprehensive approach to public health. The creation of the DCC is consistent with recommendations in the North Hampton Policing Review Commission's final report entitled Reimagining Safety issued in March twenty-twone to create a municipal Department of Community Care to provide civilian, non-armed responses to mental health, substance use, and other crises. This plan also fulfills the MKRC's recommendation by situating the DCC under the proposed DHHS as a critical part of the city's human service delivery and response apparatus for a comprehensive public health approach. The DCC joins and benefits from the current NHD's established leadership teams, operational capabilities, resources, experience in developing co-responder models for people with substance use disorder, and access to NHD's HIPAA-compliant Health Information Exchange, HIE, database. The second half of FY twenty-two has laid the foundation for DCC under Implementation Director Sean Donovan, and now with a proposed partnership with the DHHS team. This spring, they are moving forward with creating a training curriculum and job descriptions for peer outreach workers. In FY twenty-three, they will hire additional DCC staff, which are allocated for in this budget, develop operating procedures, build out the data, and call referral systems and pilot community responder operations. Senior Services, which had a significant increase last fiscal year to restore positions and services that were reduced during the closure of the Senior Center during the pandemic, will maintain a level budget. Services are being offered virtually and in person in an effort to reach and meet the needs of seniors while continuing to manage and adjust to pandemic challenges. The city is in the process of hiring a new director who will continue the restoration of staffing and services to pre-pandemic levels. Veteran Services has continued its critical mission of serving our city's veterans, as well as the ten other communities served by the Central Hampshire Veterans Services District. While the budget shows an almost nine percent decrease, the level of service is in no way diminished. In fact, the department has found new ways to do outreach with veterans in need of assistance that limit the risk of transmission of COVID- nineteen. The budget decrease, which continues the trend of the previous five years, reflects the adjustment to the benefits line as World War II and Korean War veterans have passed, leaving less veterans receiving benefits. The state Chapter One Fifteen Veterans Benefits are reimbursed by the Commonwealth at seventy-five percent and potentially a hundred percent for veterans who are houseless. North Hampton will continue to invest in veteran services to ensure that North Hampton veterans receive the benefits they are promised and to fight to keep the Veterans Affairs Central Western Mass Healthcare System in Leeds operational. As I reflect on my first five months and the completion of my first proposed budget as mayor, I'm aware that the road before us has many challenges. Yet, with such challenges come the community innovations that make North Hampton special. I am daily amazed at the partnerships we are forming to create cutting-edge solutions we hope will better serve the needs of everyone in North Hampton and provide a model for others around the country to follow. I am honored to be traveling this road together with you. In North Hampton, we have a long tradition of celebrating our progressive values while balancing the need for wide stewardship of public resources dearly shared. I look forward to working with my colleagues in and out of city government to find equilibrium between fiscal responsibility and innovative policy. This budget represents my first step on that path. This is not only my first budget, it is also Finance Director Charlene Nordy's first for the city of North Hampton. She has worked tirelessly to bring this budget together, all while answering my endless questions and requests for revisions. Learning from her is a pleasure and a privilege, and we are all extremely fortunate to have another paragon of financial expertise occupying the Finance Director's office in North Hampton. I also want to thank the other members of my staff for their remarkable work on this budget, including the design of the new cover, which we're very proud of. As you can imagine, by looking at it, producing a document like this is truly a team effort, and they are a wonderful team. Huge thanks go to Mayoral Assistant Court Client, Administrative Licensing and Economic Development Coordinator, Annie Lesko, COVID- nineteen Economic Recovery Grants Administrator, Abby Stone, and Chief of Staff, Alan Wolfe, for their support and their stellar work. I look forward to working with the City Council through the rest of the budget process to answer any questions about this budget proposal or to provide any additional information. Respectfully submitted, Gina Louie Shara, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, this year, there's a little bit of a break in tradition around. COVID- nineteen has caused a little bit of change here, correct, Mayor? In the past, Mayor Narcoitz, on the night of council or the day of when he was going to deliver his budget message, that's the day counselors would receive their budget books. Often, many of us would receive our books while sitting at our desks at council. So, but COVID- nineteen has changed that a bit, and the practice actually started with Council President Shara of getting the books out to counselors a few days before to allow them a little time to look things over. So, it's all to say that this, this presentation, this is a presentation and, and, and an opening to the, our budget discussion. It's not a time, at this moment, for us to go into a lot of questions about the mayor's budget. We have hearings that we're going to be doing later on in the agenda. We have some financial orders to consider, and that'll be the time where we can start to discuss the, the details of, of, of the, the mayor's budget. So, um, unless there's like one, clarifying questions are allowed. Counselor Labarge.
Yes, I just want to thank our mayor for such a full, detailed presentation. And I am so impressed with the cover on it. Really, I mean, I think it is just wonderful. But the wordings that you used today, Mayor, came right from your heart about the education in our school, about the COVID, the difficulties that we've all had in the city of North Hampton and our businesses and so forth. In the statement you made, I know you care and you will help in any way as our mayor. Thank you for this presentation.
Thank you so much, Counselor. That means the world to me. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Okay, it was, it was a great message, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I, you know, I look forward to the budget hearings and, sorry, it's loud here downtown. Um, and to, you know, any questions that you have on May thirty-first and June first and to your deliberations on June second. So, thank you so much for the privilege of letting me present this to you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. And to, I, I just want to repeat for those listening in that, as the Chair of Finance shared earlier, we will be doing public hearings on the, on May thirty-first, starting at six o'clock, and on June first, also starting at six o'clock. And that we're, in the meantime, your, all counselors are available for phone calls, chats over coffee, email discussions. Feel free to reach out to us and to, to ask us questions and share your thoughts. So, thank you, Mayor, and we have a long agenda. And has Lisa shown up yet? I haven't seen her in the, does anybody have Lisa's number?
Laura might have a way of getting ahold of her.
Yeah, so, um, well, if she shows up, we will revisit that public hearing on the poll petition. I just want to ask, is there anybody here for that particular poll petition? If you could, if you could raise your hand, just so we know if you're waiting around. I wouldn't want to have somebody waiting, somebody from the public waiting for many hours. All right, I'm not seeing any hands raised. Okay. Uh, presentation, well, now, we are going to recess for city services. Do we have to vote on that, Laura?
Not vote to recess, but just, just a roll call once they convene.
Right, okay, so we recess and then, um, and then it's a roll call to convene city services. Okay, we're going to recess. I hand things over to the Chair of City Services, Counselor Foster.
Thank you, Council President Nash.
Your committee.
All right, so we have recessed. We're now in the May nineteenth committee meeting for city services. We just have one agenda item that's been referred to us that's time-sensitive, which is why we're doing it this way. Laura, would you please call the role for city services?
Sure. Counselor Foster.
Here.
Counselor Gore.
Here.
Counselor Labarge.
Here.
And Counselor Perry.
I'm here.
Okay, before we take this up, Counselor Nash and I had spoken briefly at the beginning. Typically, committee meetings do have an opportunity for public comment. So, Mayor, before you introduce this item, I just wanted to check to see if there's anybody here for public comment on the appointment of Central Services Director specifically. Okay, then, Mayor Shara, do you have an introduction to make for us?
Sure, I'm very happy to bring this appointment of Patrick McCarthy to you for the, for Director of Central Services. Um, as you all know, we have been without a director in Central Services for most of this calendar year with the retirement of former Director David Pomeranz. And I'm really excited to be working with Pat. Pat was our, has been our facilities project coordinator here since twenty-fifteen. Um, he is, during this time that we've been without a director, he has really sort of been filling in and found himself sort of doing multiple jobs. And he will be a remarkable Director of Central Services. He has a wonderful background that I very much appreciate of working in public and affordable housing and doing other project management and construction, and just brings an unbelievable wealth of knowledge and experience to this position. He's also a joy to be with and is just a very, has a very calming presence. And I think that makes, is a really good quality in a director. He, he works really well with people and is a wonderful communicator. So, I am very, very happy and excited to be putting forward this appointment of Patrick McCarthy, and he is here this evening if you have questions for him.
Welcome, Patrick. It's nice. Thank you for joining us. Just a quick overview of how this will go, because we've recessed during a full council meeting. Any counselor is, is welcome to participate. Patrick, if you'd like to, if you have anything you'd like to say to the committee first, and then I'll open it up to questions.
Sure.
Sure, I'm humbled and honored to be here for you tonight. I've actually worked with the City of Northampton and in the City of Northampton for the past 22 years. First in my capacity with, as a project manager for Valley CDC, I've gone before the council several times asking for support and funding. And as well as doing a small stint as an intern in the Playing Department back in 2001, working with James Thompson. He was my teacher for a certificate at Hoyou Community College, and that was interesting. And I did a short stint in Springfield between 2012 and 2015, working on the renovation of some of the tornado damaged buildings in Springfield, and also had the opportunity to come back to Northampton. Our agency had purchased the New South Street Apartments, which is located at the Roundhouse behind the Academy of Music. And in 2015, I started working under Dave Pomeranz as the Facilities Project Manager. And I have enjoyed that position, and a lot of that position I will maintain. And I'm happy for that, and I'm looking forward to hearing your comments and questions. Thank you, and thank you, Mayor, for your kind words. Very nice.
Thank you. So, so counselors, it's open now. If anybody has comments or questions for Pat? Counselor Mary.
Hi, Patrick. Yes, I was also impressed with your background. It's very rich and could bring a lot to this position. And I'm glad that you've already joined us at Energy Sustainability Commission. Because I guess my comment or my question would be, I would like, just like to hear more about your thoughts on, you know, this new reality with our climate crisis and how, how you would integrate that into your decision-making and into your department, because it's something I think we're, you know, each department is, is going to have and is already doing so, having to think about it every stage. So, I'd be curious to hear your thoughts on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. One of my interview questions was actually relevant to that, so I had the opportunity to give it some, some thought. Making the City of Northampton carbon neutral by 2030 is a huge task. And it, it actually has informed a lot of our decisions since I started working in 2015 with the Central Services. If we were to have a boiler breakdown, say at the Academy of Music, we actually did a lot of research in trying to find out the most efficient boiler or way to reduce, you know, carbon usage and also energy efficiency. So, we've actually been doing that on a day-to-day basis. I think one of my, my, my main understanding is that 2030 is a goal and that it's going to take a series of very small baby steps to get there. Right now, it, it's, it seems like a unsammonable leap to get there by 2030, but it is a spectacular goal. It's very positive, and it informs our day-to-day decisions on how we move forward. Some of my thoughts are that the technology has not, in my opinion, has not caught up to the reality and that we need to be cautious in our decisions. And, you know, for example, you know, if we replace, replace a boiler at the Academy of Music, it probably has a potential lifetime of 20 to 40 years if maintained properly. And a lot of the new equipment is not, you know, for, you know, electric heat pumps and stuff like that. It's, in my opinion, in its infancy, although I did install one for my father back in 1989. And it's, they're wonderful, but they still, I think, are in their infancy. And I think we need to proceed slowly and, you know, cautiously with each individual decision to make, you know, replacements of equipment in a smart way. And also within, you know, considering the budget. Unfortunately, nothing is cheap. And so, I think that by keeping in mind that the goal is an important one and that we need to make those decisions on a day-to-day basis. And eventually, we'll get there. I don't know if that answered your question or if you have anything specific.
No, that's what I was interested in, just kind of broad strokes on your thoughts, and I look forward to hopefully working with you on the Energy Sustainability Commission.
Same here. Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes, thank you. Patrick, I am so happy that you were selected.
Thank you.
Just looking at your resume, Patrick, how could we ever say no? You worked under, also with David Pomeranz, who was a great leader also. He has done a tremendous job here in our City of Northampton. And looking at your resume, you starting here in the City of Northampton in what, 2014 or 2015? You know the ropes. You know what has to be done. And I am very, very pleased of the selection of having you, Patrick, being our Director of Central Service. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Counselor. It was an honor working under Dave Pomeranz. Dave was a fireman in his previous life.
Yeah.
And his, his personality reflected that. Nothing was a real crisis today. And it was nice to have the opportunity to work underneath him and gather some of his zen. And I hope I can carry some of that forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
The other, Counselor Nash.
Yeah, I, I had the privilege of serving on the, the Search Committee, and Patrick, it was a real pleasure getting to know you during that process. I, you know, I, I really appreciate that, you know, your beginnings are as a, you know, as an HVAC technician and that, that has led you through, throughout a varied career that is, when I look at you, as we look at your resume, you, you've been involved in so many different aspects of managing public buildings and bringing them, bringing it, them into online or maintaining them. And that, that I also appreciated during the, the interviews, the frankness that you shared here, that the getting to, you know, meeting our climate goals, that it's going to be difficult to get there. There's going to be financial choices that we need to make, and we need to be aware of that every step of the way. And that, um, yeah, I appreciate what, what you just shared about the heat pumps being in their infancy and that, you know, the expectation is all of that's going to get better, and that's also going to help us as well. So, anyway, um, I, 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 I was pleased with you during the Search Committee, and I'm, I'm really glad that you're here tonight for us to consider appointing you.
Thank you, Counselor Nash. I'm humbled and honored. Thank you.
Did any other counselors have anything they wanted to weigh in, question or comment? Then I'll take a moment to say that, you know, your background, particularly with municipal experience in public housing is, it's a great background. And one thing I wanted to do is take a quick peek forward and, and hear from you, what initiatives or plans you're excited to move forward with Central Services?
I think the, one of the things that I'm excited about is I think that the energy management systems that the City of Northampton has been wise enough to invest over the years is somewhat underutilized, and I'm, I'm excited to have some control to try to, you know, use it, use more of its capacity in service to the city. And I think that's, that's what, I mean, we have two systems. One is Automated Logic, and the second one is Johnson Controls. All of the building have, excuse me, all of the buildings have one or the other, and that's a head start. Because I think it gives the, an opportunity to not only maintain the existing HVAC equipment that we have, but it also gives us insight on daily operations and also, you know, how to make changes in the future. I'm, I'm excited that we have that, and I'd like to use it more, you know, I'd like to get more staff and training and involved in it, and I'm excited about that. Does that answer your question?
I think she might be frozen.
Karen Zoom is frozen, so I'm going to take over. Are there any other questions from counselors, comments? Counselor Labarge?
Yes, um, I guess there's no other questions I'm hearing, correct? Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Patrick McCarthy as our new Central Service Director.
I will second that.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Labarge, seconded by Counselor Perry. Laura, can you do a roll call?
Or, um, Counselor Foster. Still, I don't think she's rejoined. Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
And Counselor Perry.
Yes.
And one more time for Counselor Foster. All right, just three to zero then.
Oh, sorry, Laura, is it possible that she can't unmute?
Let me try.
If she left and then came back, she might not.
That is possible. Let's see. I've momentarily lost her on the list. Okay, one second. Now I don't see her anymore.
I.
Do you see her? I saw her. Oh, there she is. You know what? She's still a co-host, but let me try. Counselor Foster.
Oh, yeah, she might just be frozen.
Yeah, she told me she was frozen, so, okay. And I did hit the ask to unmute. Didn't seem to work, so.
We, I, I just got back in. I mean, you're talking about me. Did you, I, I didn't catch the motion, though. What did, what did you need me to do?
There's a motion on the floor to approve the appointment, and we just voted on it, so. Waiting for your.
Okay.
Counselor Foster, if you'd like to.
I, I vote yes.
I think she's freezing again.
Oh, no.
I think she voted yes, though. Yes.
She voted yes before she disappeared.
There she is.
Yes, okay.
All right, so that passes. It's now a motion to, I guess that we're done with City Services at this point, right?
Yes, we, we can take a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Let me see, Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
And Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Okay, City Services has, has adjourned. Welcome back to the full council. Nice job, Counselor Gore, hopping in there and backing up Counselor Foster as she was going in and out. Nice teamwork. I love it. All right, so we are back, and the, I'd like to do one more thing and then take a recess. Because we've been hopping all around here. I'd like to bring up the matter of the mosquito spraying. End it on my agenda here. We down at the bottom, right?
Yeah, under General Orders.
Orders.
That is 11C.
Okay, yes, so, um, yeah, 22.107, an order opting out of mosquito control spraying conducted by the State Reclamation and Mosquito Control Board. This is in first reading. And also, um, my understanding is we're going to want to do this in two readings tonight, correct, Laura?
That's correct.
Okay, um, let me bring this up. Also, if there's people in the room who'd like to speak to this, we are taking comment on this per the requirements of us opting out. And so, feel free to queue up while I do a little entertaining reading here. Whereas pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 252, Section 2A B, 2B, 2B, anyway. The Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs has established a process to permit municipalities to opt out of spraying conducted by the State Reclamation and Mosquito Control Board pursuant to Mass General Law. Whereas the process developed by the EEA requires the City Council to take a vote indicating the municipality's intention to opt out of the spraying after consultation with the Board of Health. And whereas at the April 21st, 22, Northampton Board of Health Meeting, the Board voted to opt out of, of 2022 aerial mosquito spraying by a majority vote of five to nothing. Whereas after receiving notification of the Board of Health's recommendation on May 19th, 2022, at 7:00 PM, the City Council held a meeting which counselors accepted public comment like we're doing now, if anybody's raising their hand, and a copy of the certified vote will be sent to the EEA by May 27th. And now, therefore, the City Council orders as follows, that, yeah, that we want to opt out. So, are there any folks who would like to speak to this initiative to opt out? I don't see any hands. I just, I'd like to provide a little background, and counselors are, feel free to hop, hop in. We did this opt-out last year, and, and we got a lot of public comment on it. We actually jumped through a lot of hurdles to make it happen, and I think it actually didn't happen, because we, we opted out, but we weren't, but the, there was something that made it so we weren't allowed to do it. But here we are. Do I have that right, Counselor Mayory? I see you shaking your head.
Oh, that's not right.
That's not right?
Oh, no, yeah, no, we were able to.
We opted out.
I, I sponsored the order, and we were able to opt out. As my recollection, other neighboring towns and cities had trouble. It was a very flawed process. I believe Amherst was not able to, even though they wanted to, and I know Senator Commerford worked really hard this year to make sure that, that streamlined that, the application process.
Right.
But it's, but it was my understanding that we were able to opt out.
Excellent. Okay, well, that's good news. So, it, so it worked last year, and we're going to make it work again this year. And I think that, um, you know, based on the, you know, the Board of Health has taken this action to get us to, this to us today so that we can act in a timely manner. I, I'm going to recommend that we do this. Counselors, any other thoughts on, on this opt-out? Wow, okay. Counselor Mayory, want to just add one, something, something from?
Well, you know how back to being in the pocket of Big B, as I said last year. Well, you know how back to being in the pocket of Big B, as I said last year. The issue with aerial spraying is it's non-discriminate, you know, it, it kills everything that it touches, so. There's, there are ways to use, use these products more selectively via truck if they're necessary, so. But, but the state really only offers us to either opt in or out in terms of the aerial spraying, so. I would strongly encourage my fellow counselors to support opting out so that we as a municipality have control over. What happens in our city.
Counselor Jarrett.
I just really want to recognize Counselor Maori's work from last year to, to make this happen. And, you know, continued, continued initiative. And for me, I'm really following the Board of Health here, you know, I trust their recommendations and, and will support this.
Thank you, Counselor Jarrett. Anybody else? Okay, so in this case. We will, we're, we're hoping to do a second reading tonight. So I think we need a, a motion to suspend the rule. So we can do. The reading tonight.
Move we suspend the rule?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Elkins and seconded by Counselor Jarrett to suspend the rule. To have second reading on this order tonight, any discussion? Seeing none, Laura.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
And Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Okay, we have suspended the rule, do I have a motion to approve this? This order? I'm gonna give it to Counselor Jarrett because I, is the motion, I cut him off and, and then the second's gonna go to. Counselor LaBarge, what the heck?
Aren't you nice?
Everybody's doing, helping out here.
I know.
Okay, so. The, any discussion on approving this order to opt out of mosquito control spraying? Seeing none, Laura, roll call please.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
And Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Okay, that has passed and we will be opting out of mosquito control spraying. Excellent, alright, and so I'm gonna suggest we take a 10 minute break. Let's come back at 8:45. And, and I'm hoping we can get Lisa here so we can do that. Public hearing on the, on the poll petition and if not, we'll just keep rolling through our agenda here.
I did email Lisa and got an away message from her till the 23rd, so apparently maybe there was supposed to be a coverage or something, it seems that she's. So yeah, I think we're not expecting her.
Okay. Use your 10 minutes wisely. I'd like to next go to brokers fees. I'm not seeing anybody, so Laura, if, if they don't show up, we're just gonna have to reschedule that hearing, right?
Afraid so, yes.
Alright, because they're the petitioners, correct?
Right.
Okay. Alright, um, well, if they show up by the end of the meeting, we'll do a quick poll petition. Alright, next, I'd like to go to. Brokers fees, because there was, we received. Looks like about five, six people referring to the brokers fees during public comment. Let's see. Item 22.043, an order for special legislation to prohibit landlords and brokers. From requiring brokers' commissions to be paid by a tenant, our prospective tenant. This is on second reading, it's been referred to the North Hampton Housing Partnership. Community Resources and Legislative Matters. Positive recommendation from the Housing Partnership. Public forum held by Community Resources. Counselor Jarrett. Introduced two amendments which are part of the legislation here. Let's see, what else? Positive recommendation is amended by Community Resources. Positive recommendation is amended by Legislative Matters. A question was, note, a question was raised at the Community Resources meeting about whether a voluntary relationship. Between a broker and a tenant would be prohibited under the proposed legislation. Attorney Seawald's response was as follow. Nothing in the proposed special act modifies the voluntary relationship between the prospective tenant and a broker. The act would prohibit a leaser from compelling a prospective tenant to pay the leasers broker or. Compelling the tenant to engage and pay a broker. Note number two, Counselor Nash requested this item be placed on the 519 agenda. And that both versions of the proposed act be presented for discussion. He would like the city council to vote to approve the amendments. Yeah, that sounds like something I asked for, okay. Yeah, so we have, basically, I, I, my, my wish there was that. That amendments and. As, as things go out to committee and come back to us, that amendments are approved by the full council. And that, that, that we're, we're all playing a part in, in building the, the legislation, so. Let's see, opinion, proposed amendments. I think everybody's pretty familiar with the legislation. And I'm not sure, I don't feel a need to read this at this time. Our people. Counselor Jarrett, would you like just to run through your proposed amendments real quick and. And then we'll put this on the floor?
Sure, so you, you suggest that, that I. Run through the amendments and then we put it through as amended, we put it on the floor as amended?
Yeah, I, 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 yes, let's put it on the floor as amended.
Okay, so. The amendments are that. The, so we received some, so one is just a Scrivener's error. In, in the first, first section, and the second one is a clarification. And we received some concern from. From brokers that this would prohibit the. Prohibit them from requiring a tenant to work with them. And as, as different from requiring a tenant to pay them, and that was never the intention, we didn't, we. Understood that if a landlord engaged a broker and then a tenant wanted to. Use, to use that landlord, to, to rent from that landlord, that they would, they would be working with that broker. So, the language, which we see up on the screen, in section two, is no landowner, landlord less or sub less or shall demand or require that a tenant or prospective tenant, and then we added, this was Attorney Seawald's language, retain, hire, or, and then engage a rental agent or broker, and then add, we added, and pay such agent or broker a fee or commission as a condition of applying for or leasing a residential rental unit in the city of North Hampton. So, we just wanted to make it absolutely clear that this was just about the fee. This was not about preventing brokers from doing their business. So with that, I will move the order as amended.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Jarrett, seconded by Counselor Perry. This item is on the floor for second reading, meaning it's up for approval. And any discussion? Counselor Jarrett?
Well, I just really wanted to thank all of the bodies that this was referred to, the Housing Partnership for taking it up. And, and, you know, they really helped shepherd this into existence in the first place. And then, Community Resources, Counselor Perry for chairing the, the excellent public forum where we, I think it was over two hours, and we heard from a whole variety of viewpoints on the issue. And, and then also in Legislative Matters, thank my, my fellow members there for taking that up as well. So, we just really appreciate that process. And then our mayor for also being a co-sponsor with us. And being at that forum, listening to everyone, and giving, giving her thoughts on it. So, so everyone who's been involved so far, just really want to appreciate. It's been a process, you know, I've, I've gone out and, and met with brokers, listened to landlords, listened to tenants. And do believe that it, through that, that, that this is a good path forward. It's, it's only one of many paths that I believe we need to take to, and, you know, our fair, the Fair Housing Report from 2019 has a number of other recommendations that I hope we will take up. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Counselor Jarrett. Counselor Maori?
I want to second that, and thanks to, to Counselor Jarrett and, and also the mayor. It was kind of great that the mayor got on board as a counselor and then took another angle as the mayor. It was very convenient, and I thank her for that. And, you know, right, and for our kind of tireless advocates, Ace, I know, Colin Hannah. I mean, the Unlocking Opportunities Report and that work really gave us legs. And this is exactly how those kinds of in-depth reports, I think, are supposed to work. You know, that they, they, they get out there and then folks like us, counselors, can run with that. And also wanted to thank the public. I thought we had some really thoughtful discussions, very nuanced. I learned a lot about our community and how it's working. And just to say, you know, this is a long process and we're gonna need to advocate it during the state hearings. So, let's all remember to kind of keep engaged on this because it's clear it's something we want, but it's going to take a little bit more muscle to get it through. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else? Counselor Moulton?
Yes, just to add to what Counselors Jarrett and Maori have said. I, I too listened to the, the two hours of very illuminating, I found, testimony during the public forum. Have read all the, all the correspondence that we've received and talked to landlords and tenants. And I think tonight, we're really representing a, a group, tenants who don't always have a voice. Among, some are among the most vulnerable in our community. And I, I think this is a small step we can take to, to attempt to level the playing field of the, of the housing marketplace. And that's why I am supportive of this.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Counselor Gore?
I just want to reiterate what everyone else said. And as a tenant and a renter myself, I think that this home rule petition is really needed. And especially in our city where we have this broker fee issue. And I just think that this will really help a lot of tenants and a lot of renters because broker fees have been a barrier for me for housing before in the past. And so I know it's, it's definitely a barrier to housing for people.
Counselor Foster?
Also just wanted to thank the sponsors and acknowledge again my gratitude for the public process and the, you know, amount of opportunities folks have had to weigh in. I've definitely had correspondence with people, with, you know, people very much in favor of this and some landlords concerned about what the impact that this may have. And it was brought up earlier, how, you know, yes, this may be, these fees may be rolled into the rent. Yes, there are tax breaks, but it's the upfront costs. It's really such a tremendous barrier. And, you know, thank you sponsors for bringing this forward and, and, you know, one, one step along the way to reducing some of the move-in costs for folks.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes, I also want to thank the sponsors. We're in dire need to have this order coming in front of us. We have heard for, I don't know how long, how it's so expensive to even rent in the city of Northampton. And, you know, you look at another thousand dollars, that's another thousand dollars coming out of their pockets, which takes away from them from getting food or whatever. This is the right way to go. It has to be done. So, thank the sponsors very much for having the hearings. We heard people speak. And it made sense to do what we had to do here. So, thank you to the sponsors.
Counselor Perry?
Well, since we're all speaking here, I also want to reiterate that I think this is a very important step in the right direction to helping to add some diversity to the community here in Northampton. And I, I do also want to say that I am very proud to be part of this council because we are taking, this is not just one step. We're also, we're changing zoning laws. We are really trying to be proactive and attack the situation from as many angles as possible. So, it's, it's been really nice to see how forward-thinking this city and this community is to handle this issue. And as a renter myself, like Counselor Gore, this hits close to home. And, you know, listening to hours of comments really kind of showed me a lot of the different angles. And, and it's not just for people moving in to a new house, but it also, these fees have been keeping people in situations because they don't want to try and find another place. And so I think that this is, again, a nice stepping stone to, to try and alleviate this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, anybody else? All right, I'm gonna go. All right, that, yeah, the thing that really stood out for me was that the, the range of services brought, that brokers bring to the table are so much in service of the property owner, the person leasing the apartment, that it, it just, it struck me like, so you're paying somebody to show, bring you into somebody's apartment to show it to them and to do a background, you know, do the, the checks on your employment history and your credit history? That, that, that's not in service of you, that's in service of the, the person who wants to, who is looking to rent their apartment. And that, and, you know, it, it's not like you, you go into those situations where you want to hide stuff, but you're ready to share it. But, you know, you, that, that the other side of the table needs to do a little work here. And I think this properly resides on, on the side of the table of the landlord. And that, and that is the practice most everywhere else in the country. It's the, in New England, we have this, this odd thing we do here. And I, I think it, it gets back to the, the scarcity of, of apartments, of housing. And that really, you know, it makes things a lot more difficult. So, I, I think that this is actually, in my mind, it's just like an economic correction that it really should be, you know, that, yeah, that the landlord should be paying for this. And I, and I think Ace has made that really terrific point that, you know, that, you know, in terms of the bigger picture, it's, it's, it's a, it's a cost center for somebody who owns property. And, and they can write it off. Whereas for somebody who's, you know, looking to rent a place that, you know, you don't have cost centers like that. So, anyway, so I, I am going to be in support of this. And, and thanks to the sponsors and also council and everybody, great work on, you know, doing the public outreach here. We really did get a lot of, you know, everybody had an opportunity to step forward and be part of this. And the, the other thing is, I just want to say something during one of the, the public, during one of our committee forums, somebody mentioned that this was, you know, Northampton was proving that it was once again business, not business friendly. And, and I just wanted to, you know, say that, yeah, I can see how you might go there on this one, although I view it as a correction. But, you know, that was, came on the heels of us just to, you know, as Counselor Perry had noted, that we had expanded our zoning in the downtown area and in the Florence Center to be more business-friendly. I mean, that's, 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 we're making huge strides to, you know, in, in encourage our, our business community. As Counselor Perry also mentioned, you know, the city is, is using resources to bring people to Northampton that we're helping to pay for Summer On Strong, that we're paying for the Christmas lights, that, you know, there's lots of business-friendly things that the city is doing. And, and we are not an anti-business council. We're in this, I, I view us in, in this case as simply, we're, we're helping make a correction to join what's going on in the rest of the country. So, anyway. Counselor Maori?
You just inspired me. I just have to add that, you know, what you're saying is, is correct, that part of having a healthy community is having people, you know, reasonably be able to stay in the communities they love. And that's a healthy community and that's the health, you know, a healthy business environment. So, I just wanted to add to your statement.
Thank you. Okay, any more discussion? Seeing none, I will take a roll call on approving this order for special legislation to prohibit landlords and brokers from requiring brokers' commissions to be paid by a tenant or prospective tenant. Laura, roll call please.
Counselor Bolton?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Elkins?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
And Counselor Maori?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Counselor Jarrett?
Thank you. And I believe, so the next step is that this now goes to the mayor? And then the mayor sends it on to the state? Is that correct?
Yes, thank you very, very much. And we will move forward this home rule petition. And thank you, Counselor Maori, for, for making the point that this, our job is not done with this. This is not now accomplished. We need to get this, get the legislature to agree to allow us to this, to do this. So, as soon as we know more about how we can all engage in that process, we'll let you know.
All right. And Counselor Jarrett, thank you for raising your hand and, so we could add that bit of information in here. Okay, so the hopping around will continue. I noticed that Bob Bull Rice is in the room. And I know he has, he's, he's been sat through many of our meetings waiting to, for us to get to his item here. And so I'd like to bring up the ranked choice voting. All right, where did it go? Here it is. Item 22.072, in order for special legislation relative to ranked choice voting in the city of Northampton. I think we're all pretty familiar with this right now. We've, this has gone out to, let's see, all of the, yeah, so this came out of the ranked choice voting committee. It's been the City Services, Legislative Matters, and the Board of Registars. Positive recommendations from all of those. Positive recommendation, Board of Registars on split vote of two yes, one no, one vacant. Register, Registrar Tarantino voiced concern that changing the voting procedure is a solution in search of a problem. He is not convinced that this is a better way to elect a representative body. He is concerned that the process is outcome-oriented, that the process is defined with the end result in mind. And he, that was his vote against positive recommendation. But this has received positive recommendations from all of these other committees, including the Board of Registars. I'll entertain a motion to put this on the floor.
So, moved. Move for approval.
Second?
And this is on second reading, correct?
Yes, second reading.
Okay. Okay, yes, so, motion made by Counselor Moulton and seconded by who?
Counselor Labarge.
Counselor Labarge. And that, all right, this is on the floor. Counselors, discuss. Counselor Moulton?
Just say briefly that one of the underlying themes of the work of the Charter Review Committee in 2019 was to encourage an expanded electorate, make it easier to vote in Northampton, increase diversity in municipal government. I believe that the, the use of ranked choice voting in other communities suggests that those goals will be met by adopting ranked choice voting. I appreciate the, the hard work that the committee chaired by Bob Bull Rice and Kathy Kay put in on this. The, the recommendation that they, that, that we adopt a system that will keep everyone's votes in the running and distribution through the entire process is the correct one. And this is the last, last piece of that work of the Charter Review Committee. And I, I urge its adoption. And I'll echo what was said about the, the rental brokers' fees, home rule petition as well for this one. We're gonna have to continue to work hard to get it through the legislature and then educate the community about its use.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Jarrett?
Yes, thank you, Counselor Moulton. I would second all of that and agree that, that, you know, it, it is complicated. The description is complicated. But it makes great sense once you understand it. So, a lot of our work will be making sure that people understand it. I also just wanted to clarify that we are moving the redlined version that's indicated on the agenda, not the other version. Because the other version does not contain the amendments. At, at that, so just, just wanted to confirm that.
Thank you. Redlined version. Got it. Laura, does that hold in terms of the motion on the floor to go with the redlined version?
Yes.
Okay. Any more discussion? The mayor?
Thank you. I'm sorry, Counselor Foster, I didn't, I thought there was no more discussion. I just wanted to take a, I wasn't able to be at the I just wanted to take a, I wasn't able to be at the, your first reading of this. So I just wanted to take an opportunity to really thank the committee that worked so hard on this and the chair, Bob Bull Rice. Um, I know that this was not an easy task and so I just want to give you my heartfelt thanks, um, for all the work that went into, um, doing this with the city solicitor and, um, so that we can have a strong home rule petition to put forward. So thank you very much.
Counselor Foster.
Also just wanted to chime in with my gratitude to the committee for really, there was a lot of nitty gritty to, um, work on to figure out exactly how ranked choice voting would work. And, um, really appreciated you, you taking that deep dive and your availability for the public process and for council and committee meetings. You know, it, it, you've, you've done some great work and, you know, as others have, have said, of course, we'll, um, you know, our, our next steps after home rule petition, um, and, and working with the legislature is going to be educating the community. But I have confidence we can do this and that voters will, um, be interested and engaged. And, um, you know, I, I do think that this is, will improve, um, our elections in Northampton.
Anyone else? Counselor Maori.
And save money. We all like to save money. We're going to need the, you know, we need every little, you know, turn we can. And this, this does that. I mean, we don't have to have runoffs and primaries and all that. So that's to me a very compelling reason to go for.
Anyone else? Okay, um, yeah, I, I want to thank everybody who worked on this, especially Bob. Bob, we, I, I've seen you lingering in meetings for months, watching this in the background as it creeps through. So I, I want to thank you for that. And, um, and I also want to say, this is the, the last item that Counselor Dwight had his fingerprints on. I mean, maybe we want to keep it around just so we can keep it lingering, but I think that this would be, this is a great way to, you know, send Counselor Dwight into his retirement, you know, with ranked choice voting. So I'm going to vote to approve this. All right, any more discussion? Seeing none, uh, Laura, roll call on approving an order for special legislation relative to ranked choice voting in the city of Northampton.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori. Oops, is she frozen? Counselor Maori? Yeah, Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I hear Counselor Maori. Okay, very good.
Yes, bad connection, but yeah.
And Counselor Moulton was.
Yes.
Your response. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that passes and as Counselor Jarrett pointed out with the previous item, that this will go to the mayor and the mayor will send it off to the state house as part of, um, for approval for special legislation. And we will need to all work to advocate for this. Okay. All right, I think I'll stop doing everything out of order. And that I, I don't think that we're going to see, um, uh, national grid this evening. So I'm going to bring us up to the consent agenda and I'm going to read through it. And then, um, I am definitely going to ask that we remove the poll, the approving the, the poll on Clark Street because we weren't able to have that hearing. So, um, the consent agenda has the minutes of March 17th, 2022, March 31st, 2022, and April 14th, 2022. There's that order for Clark Street. Next, we have an order to appropriate CPA funds for Shepherd Barn Historic Preservation Project. We have an order to appropriate $664,068 in CPA funds to the Valley CDC for Prospect Place Housing Project. Uh, we have an order to acquire property located on Sylvester Road. We have an order to approve budgetary transfers in second reading. We have an order to authorize borrowing of 22.5 million for sludge, de-watering, clarifier, plant, water system, and SCADA upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant. We have the appointment of Patrick McCarthy as Central Services Director. And we had that, um, city services, uh, gave that a positive recommendation earlier today. We have appointments to various committees, um, for referral to city services. We have Dennis Nolan, uh, for the Board of Assessors. We have Jason Perry for the Conservation Commission. And, uh, we have Joella Tarbutton Springfield, um, to the housing, uh, Northampton Housing Authority. And these are referral to city services. Why didn't? Okay. I'm going to trust all of that's correct. So that's what's on the, um, consent agenda. Any requests for removals? Counselor Jarrett.
Uh, I'd like to remove 22.102, appointment of Patrick McCarthy as Central Services Director.
Okay. All right. Uh, any others? Well, as I said, I'd like to, uh, remove the, uh, 22.081, the, the poll petition for Clark Street. Okay, any other removals? Seeing none, this is the consent agenda and there's no discussion. Oh, I need a motion. There we go. I always do that.
Move approval.
I think, I, I know it was Counselor Foster. I think it was Counselor Perry who seconded it. We'll go with that.
I did, Jim.
Yeah, but you got to share a little. So, um, okay, so, uh, Laura, roll call please.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins. Counselor Elkins, I'm sorry, was that?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
And Counselor Nash.
Yes. Okay, so, um, there were two items removed. Uh, one is the Clark Street poll petition and Laura, we just.
We'll move it forward to the next agenda, the, whenever we hear, uh, schedule the hearing again.
And the other item had to do with, uh, Patrick McCarthy and, um, Counselor Jarrett has a really good reason why. Counselor Jarrett.
I'm going to recuse myself. Um, you know, my business pedal people has a con, a pre-existing contract with Central Services Department. So just to remove any possible conflict of interest or ethics question, I'll recuse myself for this appointment.
Smart move.
Thank you, Counselor Jarrett. Um, any more discussion on this item? Oh, do we have a motion to approve this? I guess we need a motion to approve it, right?
To approve.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion made by Counselor LaBarge, seconded by Counselor Moulton. Any discussion? I, I just want to say that, um, over the next few weeks, we're going to see Counselor Jarrett doing this step of recusing himself for having to do with various matters, having to do with, uh, central services. And I, I just want to underline how, th- in my mind, this really demonstrates how ethically sound in he is. That, um, that this in no way, the fact that he's got to recuse himself, um, or that he's choosing to recuse himself from these matters, um, is, is some sort of implication of something i- i- is awry here. It's really him, um, you know, making efforts to make sure that all of his, uh, work on council can, is, is extremely ethical. And I just want to applaud him for that. And, um, and I'm going to keep doing that every time he recuses himself. So, um, anyway, so that's on the floor. Any more comments?
No.
Discussion, Counselor Foster.
Just very briefly, because I froze my screen and Zoom froze at such an inopportune time. I just wanted to, um, it, say that I enthusiastically support this appointment. I couldn't say that during city services, so glad we had this opportunity.
Thank you. Yes, and that does come to us with a positive recommendation from city services. Okay, uh, seeing no more discussion, Laura, roll call on, uh, approving, uh, Patrick McCarthy as Central Services Director.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
And Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Okay. Um, the appointment of Patrick McCarthy passes. Okay, terrific. Um, and that's great because when we hear from central services, we'll have a director reporting to us. It's really terrific. All right, uh, next up, financial orders. Okay, um, I'm going to just start going into these. We have two financial orders that we can speak to. Then we have a bunch of budget-related items, um, and we'll get to those. And, all right, let's start with 22.108, in order to surplus and transfer property located at 196 Cook Avenue for affordable housing, parking, and conservation. This is in first reading. Whereas the city purchased 196 Cook Avenue with authority from city council. Initially, the city identified the parcel, parcel for an animal control facility and limited parking to serve the adjacent Broadbrook, uh, Broadbrook Fitzgerald Lake Greenway. Whereas the mayor has since identified a different site for the animal control facility. The city council hereby declares the portion of the site not identified for conservation parking as surplus to city needs. Further, city council authorizes the mayor to sell or transfer such surplus property for affordable ha- uh, for affordable housing or mixed income housing with such conditions as, and restrictions as the mayor imposes. Further, city council authorizes the mayor to transfer the land dedicated for parking and related conservation to the care and custody of the Conservation Commission to add to the Fitzgerald Lake Broadbrook Greenway. And further, the city council authorizes the mayor to execute such documents and instruments as may be necessary to achieve the purposes of this order. And to frame discussion, the mayor is here. Mayor, would you like to talk about this?
Yes, I would. Hi, counselors. Um, as I'm sure you all now know, we've reached an agreement with Smith-Vogue and Agricultural High School to build the animal control facility on their campus. Um, so as we have covered, uh, in the last five months, the quest for a location for the very needed animal control facility has been going on for many, many years. I inherited this quest from my predecessor who tirelessly looked at locations and researched locations, um, including having many conversations with Smith-Vogue. During the transition time back in December, um, with Mayor Narcoitz, he and I went over every location that they'd looked at in the city. Um, and why they were not possibilities, including Smith-Vogue. Then, of course, um, the breakthrough happened earlier this year, this calendar year on another location that the city had been interested in for years, but was too expensive for acquisition, that being the former Moose Lodge at the end of Cook Avenue, um, which this winter, the, the sellers agreed on what the city thought was a reasonable offer. I don't need to go into the rest of the history because we all, we lived it together. So, uh, as mayor, I am now a trustee on the board of Smith-Vogue. And a few days after the council voted to approve the purchase of Cook Avenue, I was talking with another trustee, Dr. Julie Spencer Robinson. And she had been reading about the vote in the paper and knew how hard it had all been. And she suggested that with Smith-Vogue not renewing the lease on the Greenfield Community College LPN program that they have there, and with the interest that she was aware of, of growing the animal science program at Smith-Vogue and the companion animal concentration, which would use the building that, that the LPN program was ex, was leaving, um, that, that perhaps this conversation could be opened up again. You can imagine my shock. You can imagine like a few like face palms. Um, after I kind of got over it in 24 hours, I reached out to Superintendent Lincoln Hoker to start the conversation. And, um, he was, he agreed that we could discuss this again. We had, what I would say was a magical site visit, um, there. It was magical because one, it was just, it was a beautiful day. We all sort of looked around and agreed, including Pat McCarthy was there, um, that this would be a great location. As we were there looking at the location, llamas walked by us and then some beautiful horses walked by, um, on their daily constitutional at Smith-Vogue. And, um, we, you know, we answered questions on both sides and, and sort of try, you know, addressed each other's concerns. And I think we all left feeling quite excited, um, because not only is this location great, but it addresses a lot of the concerns that we have heard from the various other locations, um, that we have tried. So, and, and in addition to that, for me, it's really exciting because it creates an, an opportunity for shared use and infrastructure with Smith-Vogue. Because they will be converting their building to sort of similar uses to the building that we need. And importantly, there's potential for learning opportunities for students, um, with, uh, with our building and facility. So, um, Smith, uh, the Smith-Vogue trustees had a special meeting on April 26th and the, and the trustees voted to move forward with the plan. And then at our meeting this past Tuesday, uh, we voted to surplus the portion of the land from school purposes and to transfer the care and custody and control to the city for redesignation as the animal control facility. And you will see on your agenda at our next meeting on June 2nd, in order to assign custody and control of the surplus parcel for use as animal control facility on your end. So this was a lot of information to bring us to this order that you have in front of you right now. But I'll say if there is anyone that, uh, that Wayne and I want to celebrate closing this loop with, it's you all because, um, we, we went through, we went through quite a time together. So, um, so this order is to surplus some of the lot at Cook Avenue for affordable or mixed, uh, income housing. It would be, um, I think, perfect for Habitat for Humanity units, but we've actually been creating more units for Habitat, uh, faster than they can use them. So we'll have to see whether this will fit in with their plans. But my priority would be for these to be affordable units. Um, and the goal is still to retain some conservation parking, um, on this lot. So that is where we are here today. And I know Wayne, uh, Director Fiden is also here, um, to, uh, if you have any sort of specific questions. But thank you for going along on this ride with me and, um, I like where we've ended.
Thank you.
So does Wayne want to say something or?
Yeah, I'd like to talk with Wayne.
Wayne, you have, you have something to share?
I just, it's, you know, the mayor is talking, going full circle on the animal control facility. I'll add, we're going full circle on 196 Cook. When we first made an offer on this property a decade ago, it was for exactly what we're talking about now. It was for affordable housing and parking for the conservation area. And the mayor was, uh, did the ribbon cutting at the wall raising at, um, Habitat's most recent property. And at the time, she pledged and said, we want to keep supplying Habitat with all the lots that, that they need to keep them in affordable housing. And that's, so that's why we looked at this property 10 years ago and that's why we're back to it now. So, um, I don't want you to think it's just to reject from animal control facilities. It's, it's a good use for the property.
Um, anybody else from the city want to speak or?
Yes, I'd like to speak to Wayne.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor LaBarge. I was just making sure there wasn't anybody else who wanted.
Wayne, how many acres is that now for affordable housing?
Well, there's a lot of wet, there is a lot of wetlands in the property. So we need to do more diligence of how much has actually worked for the site. So we did enough due diligence to know it could house an animal control facility, which is basically the same footprint as two affordable units. But we haven't done enough due diligence to know, could we do more? So what we're saying is we're going to do a minimum of two units and a maximum of four units. But we just, we don't have enough information to answer between those.
Okay.
Our priority right now is we want to tear down the Moose Lodge, which does create some liability. So my office is moving towards releasing an RFP. The mayor put aside money in community development block grant to pay for the actual demolition. So once the building's down, then we're going to focus on the next step.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, councilors, any other questions? Counselor Maori, yep. Oh, we need to.
Counselor Foster might have had a question first, though.
Oh.
I do, but I can wait. Thank you.
Everybody's so little, I can't see them. All right, um, Counselor Maori, you have the floor, and then Counselor Foster.
Okay, yeah. Um, yeah, I must say, when we were voting on the Cook Avenue, um, the first time I was actually more sold on, on the city just having that land and, and kind of maintaining the access to the conservation land. And even the, you know, I, I was supportive of the facility, but, but really the land. So it's, I'm glad to hear, I just want to, um, confirm for folks listening that, that you're going to work with residents and, and keep some amount of access to, uh, Fitzgerald Lake Trails there for them.
That's correct, and, and some parking as well.
Parking, oh, great. Excellent. Yeah. And I do have to wonder what, what former, uh, Mayor Narcoitz, it's probably bittersweet. There's probably lots of complicated feelings about, uh, I, I hope you, you know, cemented him a little bit about it, Mayor, but anyway.
Counselor Foster.
Yeah, it was, it was pretty tremendous news, um, to learn that the conversation with Smithville was reopened and they were receptive to the animal control facility. So I definitely commend the relationship building and the time and the patience that, that goes in to all of these things happening behind the scenes. Um, I just had a question about the financial order, um, because I, I hear you saying the priority is affordable housing and hopefully for Habitat. The order itself, um, it says affordable or mixed, uh, mixed rate. And I just wanted to check on, uh, sort of what conditions would lead it to be mixed or, or what that could look like. Um, just because I, I have definitely heard that preference for affordable and, and I know what the need is.
So the, the mayor mentioned that Habitat, we've been very successful creating lots and they haven't necessarily been able to keep up. So we're looking at, are there any models that are out there? We're doing a project right now, right next to Habitat, building three units where Emerson Way LLC, which is a for-profit company, is creating four units because of some incentives we built into zoning and subdivision regulations. So one of the things that's occurred to us is, is there, if the site, again, big if, but if the site could accommodate four units, is it possible to find a developer, a for-profit developer, who would do two marker rate units and two affordably? Um, we, we've done this a couple of times. We did it on Turkey Hill Road, the Emerson Way piece. Um, uh, Ice Pond Drive. So it's not as common a model, but it's at least, it's one we want to leave the option open as we do due diligence.
Counselor Jared.
Thanks. It's, um, it's a wonderful outcome. Um, I wondered if there's an opportunity for, uh, alternative stormwater system, um, such as rain gardens to absorb the runoff from the parking that this will be expanding the parking. And I assume putting in a impervious surface rather than currently it's a gravel, which I guess is actually somewhat impervious too. But, um, so either pervious surfaces or, or, uh, uh, a different runoff, if, if that will be part of the process.
Yeah, we're certainly going to look at all those options. The, the, the standard for the Conservation Commission, and if we hit DPOB thresholds for them, is that we have less peak runoff or no more peak runoff than we have today. Um, the issue is, once, there's a coefficient of, of absorption, basically. And, and for asphalt, you assume it's something like close to ninety-eight percent of the water is not going through the asphalt. Compacted gravel is not that much more permeable. I don't know the exact number, but it's somewhere around ninety-five percent. But certainly we're, we're, look at it. Um, you know, uh, pervious pavement really only works well in places, or very well in places like Florence. We have pretty permeable soil, so we'd have to look at the soil below and see how wet is it. Um, drainage swales are much easier, frankly, and inexpensive. But yes, that'll be part of our due diligence going forward.
Thank you.
Counselor Moulton.
Yeah, I too think this is a, a great outcome. I want to thank the mayor for moving quickly when the opportunity presented itself to reopen, uh, conversation with Smith, Smithvocational. Uh, and, um, I've heard no opposition from neighbors of, to this use of the property. I think affordable housing, uh, or mixed, mixed use, uh, is, is great for that location. The only lingering concern, I think, is the amount of parking. So I'd just like to have, uh, assurance that neighbors will continue to be heard in terms of how much parking is, uh, is designated there.
Yeah, I can add, I mean, we, we pledged to the neighborhood meeting. I don't, you know, we have to figure it. So we have a request from Broadbrook Coalition for up to twenty parking spots. Um, we certainly want to meet with the neighborhood. There's actually an email that came to many of the councilors during this meeting, this, from just one neighbor saying, I think she said, ten to fifteen. I think the universe we're looking at is a minimum of ten and a maximum of twenty. And I have no dog in the fight, I guess, to the right expression. I think we're go with whatever the majority wants from us. Um, so I will say, we don't want enough parking that eliminates the affordable unit. So that's the other part we need to look at is how much space does each take?
Yes, I agree, Director, that it, it needs to be a balance both with the, with the, with the use for affordable housing, uh, but also with not, with not, uh, creating more, uh, traffic problems for, for the neighborhood.
Agreed.
I could just add, I, if, if I, the, any, it seems wrong to use a, a, a dog saying, but, um, you know, my dog in the fight would be that I, um, I wouldn't want to sacrifice a home for someone for parking. Um, but we want to, you know, we, we do want to keep access to, um, to Fitzgerald Lake and to allow some, um, you know, some, some parking that people have been enjoying. But, um, but we want to, I, I want to prioritize homes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes, uh, I just wanted to say that, that this really is one of those feel-good stories here. Um, I know this, as the mayor said, this has been something that, that previous administrations have been working on and previous councils have been working on. Um, and I'm glad to see that we were able to stick the landing, as they say. Um, and I also wanted to say that, uh, during the discussion about this animal control site, there was a lot of talk about the council not being receptive to the needs of the, the city and constituents. And I, I do want to say that I think a lot of effort was put into really listening to everyone's feelings. And, um, you know, it is, this is a testament to our constituents of, of keeping, you know, this issue in everyone's ears so that when our mayor was talking to another trustee, they saw how difficult it was to restart the, and, you know, that started the process of restarting this conversation. So hopefully everyone, uh, knows that, you know, we, we are trying to listen to the concerns of all the citizens. And I'm, I'm really glad that, and then this is a win-win for everyone.
Counselor Gore.
Um, I, I'm really glad of this outcome and it was really good for the neighbors of that area. I know they really didn't want that animal control center. Um, but I know there was another concern that this land was native land, um, at one time. And I wonder if there was going to be any kind of like land acknowledgement of that or anything like that going forward now on.
But, you know, I've, certainly all of North Hampton is native land. We've been adding acknowledgements to a lot of things that we do. You know, my office just added acknowledgement on our website and our concrete plan. Um, I'm not, I mean, I, I heard somebody say it, we're not aware of any evidence that this site more than all of North, you know, there are obviously settlements along the river. Um, we're not aware this site had more settlements than other places. But I mean, generally, we're doing acknowledgements on our website and our plans. Um, and we were trying to acknowledge this whenever we're a unique site.
Councilors? Okay, um, so, um, where did this go? There's my agenda. Yeah, so, um, yeah, this is a great outcome, Mayor. I just, really nicely done. And I know you wished it happened a little bit sooner, the timing worked. But, um, yeah, this, this is a terrific outcome. And the, 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 the thought of, you know, this, the animal controls facility being at Smithville, that, that makes sense, um, having some folks have affordable housing in the, you know, in a lovely, quiet neighborhood that, you know, backs up on Fitzgerald Lake. And, you know, I picture families and kids like having all of those trails as their access. That's wonderful. And, um, so, oh, and I also want to say that, um, that, uh, Mayor Narcoitz is probably watching a Celtics game right now and, and not even thinking about this. But I do know, as the mayor knows, that, um, he, he worked hard to try to get this over at Smithville. And that, um, and that, uh, a, a real shout out to Julie Spencer Robinson for, you know, revisiting it one more time with, with the mayor. And, you know, persistence always is, it, it, once again, it pays off. So, um, this is, this is great. So, any more discussion on this? Where is this? This is in first reading, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can send it to Finance, or we can put it on the consent agenda for our next meeting.
Move to, uh, send it to the consent agenda.
Motion made by Counselor Moulton and seconded by?
Counselor LaBarge.
Counselor LaBarge. Um, any discussion? Okay, uh, roll call, Laura.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
And Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Okay, that goes the, in order to surplus and transfer property located at one ninety-six Cook Avenue for affordable housing, parking and conservation, that goes to the consent agenda for our next meeting. Next up is item twenty-two point one oh nine. In order to acquire property located off Coles Meadow Road to add to the Broadbrook Fitzgerald Lake Greenway. I'm thinking Wayne is here. Wayne, rather than me reading, do you want to describe what we're doing here?
Sure, this is the biggest inholding we have in this greenway. So about eighty percent of the greenway is south of this property, the Andros property. About twenty percent is north. And the land's not posted, so you could walk from one part to the other, but it's a gap in our greenway. We actually named the greenway, um, aspirationally. So it's two areas, but we named it as if it was one area because we had hoped we'd connect them. Um, so this is the final connection. We actually made an offer in two thousand fourteen for the property. And the owner just reached out to us about a week and a half ago and said, hey, you know, that offer you made in two thousand fourteen, we, we'd like to accept that. We don't know the exact, we have an agreement on a price per acre, which is based on the assessed value. We don't know the exact acreage until we survey it. So our estimate is twenty, it's two thousand dollars an acre. Our estimate's twenty-five acres, which will be fifty thousand dollars, but it's going to be plus or minus a little bit for when the survey comes in. Um, Broadbrook Coalition just met last week and they generously pledged fifteen thousand dollars towards the purchase. We already had ten thousand dollars from CPA on hand and twenty-five thousand dollars from past donations. So we have all the money. It, you know, empties out all of our open space accounts, so we don't have money for the next one. But this one's important enough. We think it's, it's worth going for.
Okay, thank you, Wayne. Uh, Counselor LaBarge.
Right. I'm so happy that these, um, residents came forth. Wayne, um, you're looking at twenty-five acres. That's quite a bit of acres and we're filling that gap. And I think it's very, very critical here at two thousand per acre. And we already know we have money to accommodate that price. So I support this a hundred percent.
Thank you, Counselor LaBarge. Counselor Jarrett.
Yeah, this is great to connect these conservation areas, you know, all the way up to the half field line. Um, I have wandered up in this area and I wondered, is there a plan to cross Broadbrook with a trail and, and run half trails up in this area? Will it be preserved as a, it's a wilder section? Is that known?
It, it's not known. I mean, philosophically, the, our approach is always the more active a volunteer group is, the more we empower them to make those decisions. Broadbrook is one of our most active partners, so we would probably let them make the decision. Most of Broadbrook is very wide and difficult to cross. But there is one place very close to this property where it makes a sharp turn and you could build a bridge across it. So it's certainly feasible to do, but I think, as I say, we pride deferred to Broadbrook in that position.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, um, this is also in first reading. Um, I will enter, Counselor LaBarge.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to place this on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Counselor LaBarge, seconded by Counselor Jarrett. Uh, to put this on the consent agenda, this is in order to acquire property located, uh, yeah. Am I reading the right one? Yeah, off Coles Meadow Road to add to the Broadbrook Fitzgerald Lake Greenway. Any discussion on this motion to send it to the consent agenda? Hearing none. Roll call, Laura.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori. Don't see her, although, okay, um, come back to her. Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
And just one more try for Counselor Maori.
Yes.
See, persistent pa- persistence paid off again. Okay, so that has been passed, the, the motion is passed to send that to the consent agenda. How's everybody doing?
Fine. How about a five-minute break?
All right, let's do a, I like that, a five-minute break, so we'll be back at nine fifty-five.
Sounds like a plan. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, yeah, we have, so we have a number of items here related to the budget. And, um, the item C through items, item H, no, I.
Item C, D, E, F, G, and A.
Yes, thank you, Counselor. And that, um. So we'll, we'll have to do, um, the, something with Counselor Jarrett and that, um, uh, that we, we are doing public hearings here on, um, on the, on the budget and that, I would entertain a motion to refer these items to the Finance Committee as they're holding the public hearings on the budget of which these orders are related to. Counselor Jarrett.
Before that motion gets made.
Yes, very good.
Let me read a little statement. So as a member of the Pedal People Cooperative, I have a financial interest in the decisions that are made regarding the Locust Street Transfer Center, which is part of the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. So I'm going to recuse myself for that one. And then for the general fund, I can't participate due to a conflict of interest as Pedal People has a pre-existing contract with the Central Services Department. And I know for, when we, when we do debate on June 2nd, we're going to do, divide the motion, divide the question so that I'll be able to participate on everything but that item. But for the referrals, that's not possible. So I'm just going to let you all do, make those decisions about the referrals and we'll join that debate later.
Thank you, Counselor Jarrett. Okay, so we don't have a motion yet, but I, I just want to say once again, Alex is doing the right thing and I really appreciate it. Counselor LaBarge.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we send item C through H to Finance Committee.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on these items? Okay, uh, hearing no discussion. This is where, this is a motion to send items C through H to the Finance Committee for a recommendation. Laura, roll call please.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
And Counselor Gore.
Yes.
That has been sent to, um, Finance for a positive, for a recommendation. And we can welcome Counselor Jarrett back into the room. There he is. Oh, good. You weren't that very far away, right? All right.
Barely had any time to eat.
Oh, I'm sorry. We should have discussed it. It's a lot of money. We should have spent a little more time discussing that referral. So, um. All right, so we're up to item 22.118, in order authorizing acquisition of drainage easement on Sherman Avenue. Mayor, who from the city is here to speak to this?
I see Director LaScalia.
Oh, there, right. I got my new glasses on and everything and I still can't see people. There is, hello, Director.
Hey, hi, good evening, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to be here. I just have a, a few words to say about this. We're doing a little bit of housekeeping on Sherman Avenue as part of the development of the parcel at number 29. And what we found is that we have an, an old, what's called a centerline drain easement on this property, which just means it's recorded at the Registry of Deeds, but it is not as clearly defined as we would like. We like to have a, a plan of the easement and we like it dimensioned, so we know exactly what our access looks like. And, and there, there is no question about where our utilities are and where we're able to access to maintain and/or repair and/or replace them. So what this order does is it just seeks to formalize an old centerline drain easement that already exists by defining it in more precise terms. So we've been working with the attorney for the property owner and that's the order that you see in front of you. So this is fairly straightforward, but happy to take questions.
Counselors. Counselor LaBarge.
Yeah. Donna, did I hear you correctly that you are working with the owner near that property?
Yep, so Sovereign Builders owns the parcel and we've been working with their attorney to draw up this plan and to communicate what we need. And there's no objections from those folks and, and, and that's why this is here tonight.
Thank you.
Donna, um, so are we expecting to pay some money for this easement? Is there a fee cost for us or?
No, there's no fee associated with this. It's a voluntary arrangement between the city and the property owner. So the only time we do an appraisal or there's a transfer of money is when we need to do that because there may be some level of negotiation.
And so this is of benefit to both us and the property owner. That, this is a, this is basically clarifying whatever, the, you know, the easement and, and clarifies things for the property owners. So this is a good thing for both sides.
It is. Some of these older easements have, you know, a, a lack of definition and that can be surprising and confusing to folks if we do actually need to get in and, and do some work.
Okay. Counselor LaBarge.
Yeah. Donna, when will they finalize the paperwork on this?
If we vote tonight, it, it, I think you folks have to sign this and then, you know, we'll record it at the registry as soon as we can. You know, it's good to have this formalized so that the project here can, can proceed. So I would say as, as soon as possible and hopefully, you know, next week.
Thank you.
Well, just to clarify, this is on the agenda for, this will be referred tonight either to Finance or to the consent.
The consent agenda, yeah. So if they could, I guess if it could go to the consent agenda, that would be helpful.
Okay, and that meets the, a timeline that works for the city?
That would be fine. Yep.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, um. Do we have a motion on this?
No.
I'm making a motion.
Okay, Counselor Perry is making a motion to send it to the consent agenda?
Yes.
And I think I saw, um, Counselor LaBarge once again with that quick second.
Yep, second.
Any discussion on referring this to the consent agenda? Seeing none. Laura, roll call please.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
And Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Okay, so in order authorizing acquisition of drainage easement on Sherman Ave has been moved to this consent agenda. Next up, item 22.119, in order to accept DA Sullivan $10,000 gift for public art project. This one's nice and brief. Uh, the, the Northampton City Council gratefully accepts the donation of $10,000 a gift to the city of Northampton from DA Sullivan and Sons, Inc. And in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, approves using the gifted funds to fund a public art project. Thorne's Marketplace mural under the direction of the Northampton Arts and Culture Department. Mayor, is there somebody here to speak to this?
Um, I can speak to it.
Oh, great.
Um, so Thorne's has asked us to partner, has asked the city to partner with them. And the city and the Arts Council to install a mural on one of the rear sides of the building to create a more attractive space. So as you know, that, that rear part of Thorne's between Thorne's and then there's the parking garage. That's where the Tuesday Market is. That's really an important sort of gathering space, but it doesn't, it doesn't have any sort of decoration to it or color. And so the idea is to create a mural to, to go there. So we had been exploring different funding possibilities and counselors who've been around a while will, will know that DA Sullivan has very, very, very generously for quite a few years, made an annual gift to the city of $10,000 that has gone to lots of different projects. So, um, in the council chambers, which some of you have never experienced putting your booties in those seats. Did I just say booty? I did. But not sad.
Twice.
Those were donated by DA Sullivan back in 2016. They have done work on some of the early, they've donated money for work on early childhood playgrounds at Leeds and Bridge Street Schools. The water fountain in Pulaski Park was also funded by them. The digital display and presentation system at the JFK Community Room. They've supported the Senior Center Technology Lending Program. And so this year they approached us as they have the last few years and, and said they would like to make this gift. And we were trying to figure out what would be the best use of it. And we brought this idea to them and they were very, very enthusiastic about helping to fund this. So, um, I just want to give my, my very sincere thanks to them. They, they are, you know, wonderful members of the city, are so generous, have given so much. They are wonderful residents of the city and I'm just so appreciative of how every year they, they look to do something that has meaning and for the city and in the city. So, um, so that is what this gift is for, to create a mural on the back of Thorne's. And, and it's also, you know, we hope that we will, that will sort of, it'll draw more visitors there. And also will draw attention to the parking garage that we're always trying to get, encourage people to park in the parking garage. So this is a really lovely, lovely thing that they're doing and I can't wait to see it painted and up there.
Cool. Uh, Counselor Foster, then Counselor LaBarge.
Thank you for that introduction. That's great. And I, I have had the opportunity now to vote on acceptance of a couple of gifts from DA Sullivan. And it's so generous and to hear you discuss the legacy of their gifts, it's very powerful. And I see that this mural is going to be under the direction of the Arts and Culture Department. And I'm wondering if you know what the process may be, like, do they have a designer? Will there be a public process for soliciting proposals? Or do you know that piece?
Um, Alan? Are you here? Alan has been working with Brian Foot and I'm hoping that he can pop on and give, hold on, I'm going to ask him to unmute some information on what he knows.
Sorry, I, I was clicking around a little bit. Were you asking what the process for the proposals is?
Yeah, I'm just wondering. I know it's under the, the, you know, direction of the Arts and Culture Department, but what that looks like if there, if there is a design or there'll be a public process to solicit designs and an artist and, you know, all of the stuff that goes into making it happen.
I, I definitely know that he has a process planned. I, I'm sorry that I can't speak. I, I'm sorry that I can't speak in detail to what it will be. I think, I think we're required to have some level of public process for this kind of expenditure. But I can absolutely reach out to him and get a better answer than I'm giving right now to you councillor. Sorry.
Sorry to spring that on you, Alan.
No worries. I, I, I might have known, but I don't.
Councillor LaBarge, I believe you were next, right?
Thank you. I want to echo what the mayor has stated about DA Sullivan and Sons in the family. They are so caring and heartwarming. And very generous to our city of Northampton. And I thank them also for all the donations that they have done. And yes, our desks, our chairs, we needed them anyways, but they are so appreciated. In our city of Northampton.
Thank you councillor. Okay, um, anybody else? So I don't think we have a motion yet, do we?
No, we don't. Make a motion or send it to the consent agenda.
Okay, motion made by councillor Barge and seconded by.
I'll second it.
Councillor Perry. Okay. Any more discussion on this? Hearing no discussion. This is to send it to the consent agenda. Laura, roll call please.
Councillor Mayori.
Yes.
Councillor Moulton.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Perry.
Yes.
Councillor Elkins.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Gore.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
And councillor LaBarge.
Yes.
Okay, that order to accept a gift from DA Sullivan is going to the consent agenda for our next meeting. Okay, uh, we've already dealt with the broker's fee. Now we're up to item 22.106. An administrative order to amend the city of Northampton Administrative Code. This is in second reading. We had the hearing on this earlier and. I would. Entertain a motion to. Amend the administrative code.
Second.
All right, I know councillor did the second. I don't know who did the first.
That was me.
Oh, so.
Councillor Foster, I could identify myself.
No, that's okay. Well, it, it shows up. But what happened was there was lots of green boxes jumping around. So that's my tell. So councillor Foster made the motion seconded by councillor Moulton. Any discussion on this? Councillor Jarrett and then councillor Foster.
Great. Thank you. I just wanted to, you know, as I said last time. Make, you know, just a thanks to all of you, to the mayor and the health director and. And others to, to really working to hold the principles of the policing review commission's report in crafting this. So that's great. I had a question for director Donovan that I didn't get to ask last time. I wondered about the, the, where in the structure, the, a, a, the recommended advisory board. Would, would be for, so people with lived experience. How, how that plays into the decisions that will be made for, for the Department of Community Care. And, and perhaps other, other aspects of the. Health and Human Services Department.
Yes, thanks. Thanks councillor Jarrett. And I also want to leave some space for Michelle to answer to on behalf of the DHHS in, in general. But I will say that, you know, I have, I was present for a lot of the Northampton Policing Review Commission's meetings. And certainly have looked over the report quite a few times. I think that having perspectives of people with lived experience is essential for this department. And so I know in collaboration with Michelle and Director O'Leary, soon to be Commissioner O'Leary. Works exploring ways to include community engagement. One of the things that I wanted to be thoughtful about is how to include people's participation. And also offering ways in which people either could be compensated or honored for their perspectives. I know that was a really big talking point during the commission's meetings. Was how to include people with lived experience in a way that in terms of technology and access made sense. But also in terms of like honoring their perspective. So we're exploring some options right now. I want to say that, you know, Michelle and I have been working really diligently, even like the last few days, many hours. To figure out how we're going to use the funds we already have to use for fiscal year 22. To work with some consultants that I hope will help with that. I hope to be more detailed when we have our budgetary hearing on 31st. And I, and I hope you can respect that. We, we can be able to share some more then. Yeah, I just, I want to make sure that when we include people to be giving, you know, input about lived experience. And hopefully forming into an advisory council about people's time and, and worth as being respected. And I think it's a real challenge in the city right now. I know that there's a committee that, you know, we're hearing about today that are looking at barriers to, to service on committees and commissions. And I think while I'd love to, you know, tackle some of the barriers. With, with my appointment as director, implementation director, I think we have bigger structural changes in the city that I'd like us to address too. And so as I'm saying this, you know, I, I really appreciate the question. I, I will just say as someone who, who does have lived experience, you know, being in the mental health system. And knowing that's a huge part of probably why it was, you know, granted this role. I take that in to a lot of, you know, consideration. So I, I don't want to over promise anything, you know, that we, we are still working through. But I think it's a really important part of, of how I want this department to unfold. So I'd love to give you more details, you know, when we talk about the budget. If you have any follow-up questions, I'm, I'm certainly willing to answer that. And I also wanted to leave some space for Michelle to offer anything if she would like to as well.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you for having us, city councillors and mayor Ciara, for all of your support for this work ahead. We are very committed to peer participatory processes, community voice. And making sure that we value everyone that's going to be part of this process. And that's something we've always worked towards with our goals of Hampshire Hope and the Coalition. Across Hampshire County and our prevention work, we think about this with. Our other programs, the DAR program. And we will continue to pursue all means possible to be able to bring all voices to the table for all the work that we do. And especially with the DCC being a new and emerging program for the community. We're going to be informed with what the community wants and needs. And we're committed to making sure that that happens. So definitely reiterate director Donovan, which I'm very much just wanted to say publicly enjoying. The process of working with and getting to know. And as well, looking for vendors that will maintain and uphold our values and mission. The health department that commit to contracts that include all people's voices and processes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you both. Yeah, I look forward to hearing more on May 31st.
Councillor Foster.
Yeah, thank you, Sean and Michelle for, for being here and, and for your, you know, the hard work and, and being here to, to answer our questions. Really appreciate it. You know, it was interesting and surprising to me councillor Nash, you reflected on it when we held the public hearing on the administrative order. That, that there actually weren't members of the public here to speak to it. And, and that's not for lack of people knowing that it was happening. You know, I, I spoke with. A couple of people in Ward Two who were involved and closely watching. You know, carefully following from the NPRC to the recommendations now. And they were both sort of wholeheartedly in support of this administrative change. And really glad to see it being housed in, you know, Health and Human Services and, and that change. And so, you know, I just wanted to, to say that because it, you know, it can be a little bit of a question as to why. But the, you know, people I engaged with who are following this knew that it was happening. One. And, and, and we're very supportive. The only question that has come up or something I just wanted to make sure to state out loud as well is that. With the recommendation coming out of the policing review commission. You know, to move responses that don't need an armed police response to the Department of Community Care. I guess the, the piece I want to hold on to is, is. Mental health and health related services are, are going to be really significant. I also just want to make sure we're holding on to the piece of calls that maybe coming in that are not health related. I know that there was, you know, specific mention of animal control in that report. And there's other. You know, calls that don't need an armed police response, but are not health related. And. We're sort of asking for the moon and I, I wanted to name that, but just also hold that piece as, as it all unfolds. And it's not going to unfold instantaneously at the moon. But just putting that out there for your consideration and would love to actually hear your, your thoughts on that too.
They can't unmute. I mean, I've been unmuting them, but.
Oh.
If you make them co-host, they could just do it the worse.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Ciara, for the unmuting action. And yeah, councillor Foster, I, I would love to respond to that, at least in, in some piece. Yeah, so I, I want to just share that we, we've had some initial conversation. We've had a lot of conversations, but some initial conversations with the police chief, the head of dispatch. Which we're going to go deeper into in the following months in this next year. To really talk about like where we overlap in terms of where we could see a use for. The Department of Community Care is, you know, you had to be created responder team. And, and it does go deeper than, than health and mental health and even, even under our initial conversations. And so while animal control was not part of that conversation. I do think, you know, we were talking about disputes. In both, you know, like buildings and the neighborhoods. Ways in which, you know, we can support people through certain sort, you know, I think disputes are a huge part of what comes through dispatch currently. A lot of calls, what even if they have a call type in the dispatch log, that is something other than dispute. There's often a disagreement about a use of space, for instance. And so we are really looking in terms of our training series to, to make sure our responders are, are really well adapted and trained. In speaking to disputes, but also distinguishing between like what's a conflict and what's maybe abuse, which is a different type of response. So we're thinking broader than just, you know, what gets, you know, called so-called mental health and, and health. So yeah, appreciate you offering us those perspectives and kind of to combine. Just one last thing I wanted to say councillor Jarrett's. Question and yours, I did want to be clear that, that while we haven't, you know, figured out like what is, what is our best model for advisory council? Like given all these ideas of compensating people or at least, you know. You know, giving worth to the lived experience people share. I have been spending extensive time at places like Manah Community Center, which is sort of our temporary resilience hub. The Touch the Sky space, people that I know who hang out at street corners certain times of week. And just trying to connect with people about what they're looking for, what they're needing. And so I have like had some really consistent and informal guidance from people that are houseless. People that, you know, are using a lot of public services. And so I want to think of a way to incorporate that more formally, but I want to do that thoughtfully too. And so I guess I, I didn't want to neglect say like, I'm having a lot of conversations. But I, you know, and that also is informing how we look at dispatch data, quite honestly. Because that gives us a lot of. You know, understanding of like, are we, are, is our first responders like going to one site repeatedly? And like, that's something that cues me and I think, and you know, Michelle and other people working on this. Like we have to talk to people on the ground and see like what's going on. But talking to people about their experience of, of, of safety. Of what's feeling hard in terms of conflicts of space, you know, in our city is also accused for where we're putting our attention. And I guess the last piece I'll say like, while we're looking for the Department of Community Care to serve like our whole city. I think when we look at the most vulnerable people in our city, like that gives us an understanding of what's going to benefit everybody. So there's this whole idea, I'll just say this one last thing, of the curb cut effect, which I take to heart, which is like. You know, when people who use chairs, wheelchairs were looking to get around before. Public works actually put cuts in the curbs, like people were like, we can't get around the city. So the disability rights movement, you know. Demanded that there be curb cuts in the sidewalk, but that also benefited parents with strollers that benefited delivery people. It benefited so many folks that weren't necessarily at the vanguard of that movement. And that's kind of a metaphor for like why we center the most vulnerable people in terms of designing our supports. Because it might benefit a whole bunch of other people in our community too. And so maybe in a future day I can elaborate more. I know it's kind of late for all of us, so, but I just wanted to respond to both of your questions in a little more detail. So thank you.
Hi councillor Foster, it's nice to, to see you. Via Zoom. I, I'm just so thrilled that you asked this question honestly. Because although public health was asked initially and the report to be the home for the DCC. We understand there's going to be a lot of roles that the DCC plays that do, you know, deviate from the traditional public health lens. That the community may interpret or understand as our role within the health, you know, fields. But I'm a public healthy, so I'm going to bring the public health to you here and say, there's almost. A little to very few ways that we can't find a public health intersection in people's lives. Whether it's, you know, social, emotional, environmental. There are so many different ways that our systems intersect that. That's one of the blessings that has come from this early. You know, bringing together of our departments and resources that the mayor has done with such great. I would just say modeling of, of a positive approach and showing and demonstrating that. By being transparent to the community that this is a, you know, health commission now. And director O'Leary has her eyes set to really grow and expand the resources and available programs. To the community and, and for the work that we do in the city proper, as well as for our regional partnerships. I would say, um, there will be no limitations to what the DCC. Can and cannot approach as far as their modalities and assessment of the needs and responses that will result in that. And we're extremely excited as we do take that holistic public health lens to look for these opportunities. As ways that we can also inform the other programs that will intersect in the resilience hub. And lots of other things that are addressing the needs that people have in a preventative way. By using that language and lessons learned, the community gives us in this process where we find we're excelling. And really making headway in progress. And the composure of the team as it's revealed too. That's something that we're really respectful of the work that director Donovan has done in his fact finding. To this point and bringing to us that the, you know, community has expressed, these are areas that we want you to explore. We want you to vision and we want you to, to find strategies to look for effectiveness. In the interventions, designs and, you know, hopefully starting to back preventative measures. So that's, that's public health. You know, in its essence. And one of the pieces that I, I think is really important for the community to know is that we will look to respond to the needs as they're identified. Without, you know, a restrictive method that is only focused on, I mean, individual sector. This is a really holistic and thoughtful innovation that the city is bringing forward. And we hope to show an application that benefits many, many different ways the city has needs.
Councillors, any questions, comments?
Can I just comment on what an amazing team they are? I'm sorry, like, I'm just. It's just, you know, I'm just, I'm just proud and just struck by how remarkable. This, this new innovation that we're doing is and, and the passion that this team is bringing to it. So I just thank you, Michelle and Sean.
Okay, so. Do we have a? Okay, so do we have a motion?
We do.
Okay, we have a motion. Good, I got that done. And um, yes, so I I just want to say I thank you to um Shawna and Michelle for being here tonight. This is exciting work. Um, and Mayor, thanks for bringing this order forward. This is a very cool reorganization. You know, as I said last time, as a human service worker, this is, this is, this is great. I I can't believe we haven't had a, you know, this aspect going on for all of the years that I've lived in Northampton. So um. With that said, um, oh, and Sean, I love the curb cut analogy. That is great. Accessibility has been, you know, it it's changed the environment for everybody, you know, whether it's around curb cuts, it's getting into bathrooms. We now have bathrooms that parents can bring kids into change diapers, you know, that they're easier for people to clean. I mean, it's just like the the I that that is a really fantastic analogy. So, thank you. All right, so um we have a motion. Um, any more discussion? Laura, roll call, please.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
And Counselor Moulton.
Yes. Okay, that passes and we now have a Health and Human Services Department with the DCC. Pretty cool. Okay, um, now on to, where else do we go? We we've done the mosquito control. We've done a lot here, guys. We've done the ranked choice voting. Now we're down to zoning ordinances. And we have something here on first reading, item twenty-two point one one zero, an ordinance to rezone one thirty Pine Street from URB. To Office Industrial. Um, Mayor, is somebody here to speak to this?
Carolyn Mish.
Presumably, she's done with her dinner by now.
Yeah.
There she is.
Welcome, Carolyn. You you want to.
I'm hungry again, though.
I know, it's been a while. You you have the floor, Carolyn, and you want to explain to us what what we're up to here?
Sure. Um, I don't know if Laura, you want to put the map up or I can share my screen, whatever you want to do. But um I think that might be helpful just to orient people. This is. A map of what we refer to as a zoning map amendment proposed to expand. What is currently the Office Industrial District, um which includes buildings of sort of old mill buildings. Around the intersection of Pine Street and Nanateck Street where they intersect and then Portiselli there. Um, a few years ago, uh City Council amended the zoning ordinance to bring in the old Florence Grammar School. To allow more flexibility of reuse of that historic building. And this parcel, which is outlined in blue, is the Florence Congregational Church. It's currently Zoned Urban Residential B. And it abuts immediately abuts the um edge of the Office Industrial District, both um on the west side and the south side. Along here, along Nanateck Street is also that purple hatching area is also Office Industrial. The reason for the request is to help support the reuse of the Florence Congregational Church. And sort of um new shared uses that are envisioned by the um Bombix um arts community. That has um started to um occupy the space and um has entered into an agreement with the Florence Congregational Church. For shared space to provide um new cultural and arts experiences in Florence Center. This property, um just to zoom out a little bit, is um just south of Florence Center and walkable from Florence Center. Even though it's not right in Florence Center. I don't have a zoom out of that. I was just sort of mentally having, I think, people sort of zoom out a little bit. And really rezoning it to Office Industrial allows uh performance space to be um an allowed use in and of itself. As opposed to just an accessory component of a church function. The companion piece that goes along with this recommendation to put this order for this zoning amendment forward would be. And entering into a development agreement with um Florence Congregational Church and ultimately Bombix. To permanently protect the historic um defining features of the church or the church building itself. And as you may recall, there are other um throughout the city, we have adopted um zoning to allow in residential districts. Provisions for the reuse of historic church buildings. For other uses that are not traditionally residential uses, just in order to um ensure that we can maintain these important historic. Buildings in our community and help them sort of re new, have a renewed life and and um. And evolve into different um uses. And so that's really the impetus behind this zoning amendment. That although they could potentially go to the planning board under in the current zoning urban residential B. We felt like it was important because it abuts an already existing Office Industrial. District that it really made more sense and opened up even more opportunities for the reuse of the structure. The zoning wouldn't um speak to details about any kinds of modifications. That um Bombix might want to undertake in the future. So uh building expansions or. Parking or site changes, all of those would um come through potentially to the planning board for site specific. Um, evaluation and modification uh through a public hearing process if it triggers such. This is really just to um allow the uses to move forward. Um, and there they are agreeable to permanently protecting the church building. In fact, that's their mission, their goal is really to to do that. And so it's um very consistent with um what we've offered to them. Is is a path forward by permanently uh by recording a preservation restriction on the building.
Thank you, Carolyn. Any other questions? And this is on our agenda. Um, this is for first reading. And uh since this is a zoning, uh zoning matter, it needs to go to planning board. And also a city council committee needs to be designated to hold a public hearing. And at times, uh in the past, uh there's been joint public hearings with the planning board. So this is on the table for referral to a committee and to the planning board. Counselor Jarrett.
Yeah, uh, so this is in my ward, um Ward five. And I have just last night met with a number of neighbors of property uh to discuss concerns and their support. And so I'm looking forward to to addressing those concerns uh through the process. And I would move that we refer this matter to Planning Board and to Legislative Matters.
Second that one.
Okay. So we have a motion to send, refer this to the Planning Board and to Legislative Matters. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion.
I I actually would like to uh also move it to Community Resources. I have a uh desire to that. Could I add that to to it as well? Or do I need to make a separate motion?
I would accept that as a friendly amendment.
That's how you do it. And the and who seconded?
I did.
Yeah, and Counselor Labarge, you're okay with that addition as well?
I'm fine.
Yep, okay. So now Community Resources has been added to the referrals. But um in but it's going to be, and Counselor Jarrett, your your motion is for Legislative Matters to hold the public hearing.
Um, well Legislative Matters needs to hold a public hearing, as does the Planning Board.
Well, we can designate a committee according to what we have here. I'm fine with legis, let's do legislative matters.
Okay, yeah, now I'll discuss with Planning Board folks about um doing a joint public hearing. I think that would be efficient, especially if we're also having a separate meeting at some point with Community Resources.
Okay. All right, motion is on the floor to refer to Legislative Matters, Community Resources, and the Planning Board. Any do, any more discussion? Hearing none. Laura, roll call, please.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Counselor Foster. Counselor Foster, okay. Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
And Counselor Nash.
Yes. Okay, that has been referred to various committees. Carolyn, thanks for being here. Is she gone already? Like the wind. Bye, Carolyn. Have a good night. So, uh Laura, am I tracking things right here that we are down to resolutions?
Yes. It's correct.
And and it's only ten forty-three. Well, you know what? I I think this all speaks to when we do our work through our committees and we do, well, you know, our public process. You know, we're we're making decisions based on known information, so this is all good. Okay, so we are up to resol, uh Resolution twenty-two point one oh one, a resolution in opposition to a Proposition twenty-two clone ballot initiative. This is in second reading. A motion to approve this.
Move approval, please.
Okay, I I heard Counselor Jarrett make the motion.
Second.
Who is that? Oh, Counselor Elkins, okay. All right, so a motion's been made. Seconded, any discussion? Counselor Maori.
I'm I'm experiencing some internet internet uh lag. Which which resolution are we? Is it the clone?
It's the clone, yes.
Thank you.
That's a fair question, asking what your vote.
First one, but I didn't know how long I did that. The other realm and the multiverse.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yeah, I'm, you know, we both, uh Counselor Gore and I spoke about this quite a bit last time, so I'm not going to repeat any of that. But um just want to say we're seeing more and more um uh momentum building around this issue. And uh I spoke recently with uh Owen Zarrett, Counselor from East Hampton. And um so who who sponsored a a resolution there. Um, so I'm excited that that this is moving, that movement. Uh, to to oppose this is uh increasing.
Excellent. Okay, any more comment? Seeing none. Roll call, Laura, please.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
And Counselor Perry.
Yes. Okay. Um, that next up is Resolution twenty-two point one oh three, Resolution in Support of the Edward P. Bowlin Department of Veterans Affairs Medical Center in Leeds. This is in second reading. Counselor Foster.
Yes, I need to recuse myself from this discussion as my employer, All Out Adventures, has a financial interest um in the Leeds via.
Okay. Counselor Maori.
Yeah, I just wanted to give a brief update on the situation there in case people hadn't heard. I know it's last item, so I'll try to be brief, but um it's a hopeful update. That's why I want to share it. I don't know, uh you might have seen it in the Mass Live. But um Rep. McGovern was talking about it. So he, Rep. McGovern has been pushing this um and um. And really representing, showing up for the medical center and um I'll just read the Mass Live part here. Federal officials used data that did not reflect the increased number of veterans eligible for, as of two thousand nineteen, access local care outside the VA system. The result, according to the GAO's assessment, was that the VA lacked a full understanding of community care providers' ability to supplement VA care. VA meaning the federal, so the federal branch did not have all the data correct about our medical center. Uh McDonald told McGovern that he recognized the serious issues with the incomplete data used to make the recommendations. According to the readout of the call provided by the Congressman's Office, he assured McGovern that the Asset and Infrastructure Review Commission, uh the group that passed with making this assessment. Uh, would have up to up to date information before making a final recommendation. According to the call readout, McDonald um also acknowledged significant upgrades had been made to the Northampton facility in recent years. And so I just want, so so basically the update is, they're saying, you know, the the federal, um, the federal decision makers were saying they they didn't have all the data on the the needs via medical center. So that's actually, I I'm feeling hopeful about that. And, you know, and go Rep. McGovern.
I know.
You know, I think it's probably because he pushed it.
Yep.
Him pushing it, we wouldn't be here. So, anyway, yay.
Yay.
We, you know, it's cautious optimism.
It's a great update. Any more comments, counselors? Okay, um, I I I just want to say that I I appreciate us bringing this resolution forward. There's a ground swell of support, especially within our veterans' community to keep this center open. And um, yeah, this is great. So thank you to the sponsors.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no more discussion. Uh Laura, roll call, please.
I think we just need a motion on the floor.
Oh, we need a motion. Okay. Motion was made by Counselor Perry and. Uh Counselor, Counselor Labarge, I'll give you the second again.
I did.
Well, you you made the motion, so anyway.
Just move it.
Okay, uh, any more discussion? Uh Laura, roll call, please.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
And Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Okay, um, I just want to say before we adjourn that the incredible amount of work we did tonight and working with the mayor. You know, that we created a DCC, we have uh over half a million dollars went to affordable housing. You know, we we came up with a solution to the animal control facility that, I mean, there's like eight or nine other things that that are all really great, so.
Mayor used the word booty twice.
Uh, yeah, that was great. Okay, so. Well, this is the time to do it. Well, this is the time to do it, but let's adjourn and then the filter can really be off. Okay, motion made by Counselor Labarge, seconded by Counselor Foster. Laura, roll call, please, on adjournment.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
And Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Good night, everyone.